Right is Councilmember Peter O'Taki. To my left is Vice Mayor Catherine Carlton. To her left is Councilmember Kirsten Keith, our Assistant City Manager. To her left is Starla Jerome Robinson. To Starla's left is our City Manager Alex McIntyre, and next to him is our City Attorney, Bill McClure. Our clerk is Ms. Pam Aguilar. And tonight, I have nothing to report from closed session because it was canceled. We have no announcements, and we're now going to go ahead and proceed immediately into our study session to review options for appellate procedures in peace officer discipline cases. We have a staff presentation by Gina Donnelly, our Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The study session we are about to embark on was scheduled at the request of the City Council. I'd like to introduce our speakers, Jeff Sloan from Renney Sloan Holtzman and Secai, and Michael Rains from Rains Lucia and Stern, who will be your presenters tonight. They're going to walk you through the various models for appellate procedures for peace officers within the confines of the Public Safety Officers' Bill of Rights. And first, to just touch on a couple of topics, this is a public forum for information only, as all study sessions are. This is separate and apart and completely unrelated to any present negotiations that are underway. And the speakers tonight are not speaking on behalf of the city or any City of Memo Park employee organizations. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the Council, good evening. We have an agenda that really focuses on the special nature of legal rules protecting public safety officers, and then quickly going into the issue of appellate processes, including the issue of binding arbitration. What are the pros and cons relating to binding arbitration? So we're going to start with the Bill of Rights, also known as PSOBR, as some of us pronounce it PO-PO-BAR. The basic requirements of that, and then the range of options that are available to local agencies, and then again, turning to the issue at hand of binding arbitration. So, want to talk just a little bit about PSOBR. It was special legislation. We got a very strong police lobby in the state. PSOBR came into effect as a result of that lobby. I know that Mr. Rains probably has a different point of view about it. And essentially, it confers procedural protections that are really higher than those available to any other class of employees in the state of California except for firefighters. Firefighters relatively recently gained the same basic protections that the cops have had under the PSOBR for quite some time. And among the requirements of PSOBR is a special section that guarantees public safety officers a right to appeal in connection with any punitive action. And the definition of punitive action is very, very broad. It's not just dismissals, demotions, suspensions, or reductions in pay and the like. It's any action that may lead to any of those particular sorts of disciplinary action. So it's really a robust and very ample protective vehicle for police officers. Would you like to add anything relative to the Bill of Rights before we get more into the specifics?
No, Mayor, members of the Council. Is this on? Can I be okay?
Now it is on, okay. That was an intelligence test. I failed. Good evening. Just so you know, and I want to make this clear, I am not the attorney for the Police Association in the city. My firm represents about 160 police associations in Northern and Southern California. I've been representing police officers for three decades in labor, in labor, discipline, civil criminal matters, and after being a police officer myself for a number of years in Southern California. I teach internal affairs investigations at several post-approved academies. I've been doing that for over two decades. I will say this, that the purpose of the Peace Officer Bill of Rights that was enacted in 1977 was, in a broad sense, to prevent abusive and arbitrary treatment of police officers in discipline matters. That is the overriding purpose. You see that in the legislative history of the Peace Officer Bill of Rights. So as we're talking about it more tonight, I'll be coming back to the fact that the purposes of the act are satisfied if officers are treated with decency and dignity and respect, as they should be in a disciplinary matter, including the appellate process.
Thanks, Mike. So when we're looking at the issue of what appeals are available from punitive action for police officers, we've really got two layers of it. One is a basic constitutional layer. The second is the layer that comes from the Bill of Rights. So, you know, we all know about due process under the federal and state constitution. And essentially, due process requires first that the employer, before taking any disciplinary action with respect, serious disciplinary action with respect to an employee, give the employee notice and an opportunity to state the employee's view with respect to the proposed disciplinary action. So it's a very odd situation where, rather than saying, here's what we're going to do, it is saying, here is what we are proposing to do. That feature of due process is something that's available to all permanent employees within the state of California, as a matter of federal law and as a matter of state law, state and federal constitutional law. And if the employer then implements disciplinary action after that initial process, then there's a right of meaningful appeal before a relatively neutral tribunal. That's also part of the rules of due process in the public sector. And then we have this interesting thing, which is that, except for binding arbitration, whatever happens internally and administratively when someone is given a right of appeal, they then have a right to appeal any adverse decision into court unless it is binding arbitration. And we're going to talk a little bit more about how that operates within the context of, for example, advisory arbitration, and even within the context of something that's not in the PowerPoint, and that is civil service board proceedings or personnel board proceedings. But one of the things that's important when we're looking at these various options is, well, except for binding arbitration, people do have a remedy of going into the court system if they're not satisfied, if they feel that they were not properly treated below.
Let me just say something here as the employee sort of side of this thing. And I want you to be thinking about this as we go through this discussion. The appellate process, the mechanism by which employees appeal discipline, is really the final destination of the entire process. As you know, the process starts with an initial investigation of a complaint of alleged misconduct. And so I want you to think about this. It's really important to me, as a lawyer who represents police officers, the police officers, these folks in uniform that you put out in uniform, are the most visible representative of you, of this city, of this government. You want them to be good representatives. You pay them to be good representatives. You trust them to be good representatives. And one of the things you want to do when you think about them is you want to make sure that they get treated fairly, if they're the subject of a complaint of misconduct. It's good business to treat your employees fairly. One thing that the cops that I represent all want is they want to know that they're going to get a fair shake if they're the subject of a disciplinary complaint by their department to begin with. That is, the investigation will be fair, thorough, and objective. The adjudicatory process by the administration will be fair, thorough, and objective. And finally, there will be an appeal mechanism, if they appeal discipline, that will be fair, thorough, and objective. That's what they want. And frankly, it's not too much to expect. And so as I come and talk to you tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about the appellate mechanisms that I think are the most fair, thorough, and objective. The things that make the officers feel that they are treated right by their employer, the things that make them great representatives of your agency because they are honored to be able to have an appellate mechanism in a discipline case, to know that it's meaningful, to know that they aren't being somehow railroaded into disciplinary actions without meaningful appeals. It's a big thing today to all of the police officers. You know, they're taking salary cuts and the like, but as long as the disciplinary process and the appellate mechanisms are there, you know, you can buy a lot of goodwill from your police officers and their association. So that's kind of the theme of my discussion as we go on.
Yeah, and not to take away anything from Mr. Rains, but I think we really need to emphasize that just about everything that he has said, or that you have said, reflects a shared interest. I don't think that, you know, we represent cities and counties and special districts throughout the state of California. All of our clients would say, Mike, that's all right. That's the way that it should be, particularly when we're talking about public safety officers who put their lives on the line every day. So this discussion tonight is really not about the issue of fairness, or whether there should be a comprehensive appellate process for police officers. That is a given, and I think it's very imperative that public agencies go, do good by their police officers and make sure that they're not arbitrary decisions. That does not mean, however, that the binding arbitration furthers that goal. And that's one of the key things that we're going to be talking about. So another part of PSOBR, which then folds into this issue about available appellate processes, is the provision in the government code that essentially says, it guarantees the right of administrative appeal. It also says that an administrative appeal will be conducted in accordance with the rules and procedures adopted by the local agency. In this instance, as we all know, for the Police Officers' Association, that is binding arbitration. So that's something that is certainly embraced by PSOBR. And I'd have to say that PSOBR probably reflects a hope and expectation that, everything else being equal, it would be binding arbitration rather than some other procedure. And typically, the appeal process does appear in a collectively bargained agreement. You don't have a situation here where you have a personnel board. In some cities, and let's just talk about personnel boards now. You know, in some cities, there are personnel boards that are established in general law cities by the city council. In charter cities, there are off, the personnel board is a feature contained within the city charter. And essentially, a personnel board is typically a three or five-member board. And what the board is responsible for is overseeing the personnel system, including promulgating and amending personnel rules, hearing disputes relating to the application of personnel rules, and also hearing disciplinary appeals. Another feature of the personnel board structure is that personnel boards don't make binding decisions. The decisions the personnel board make are typically decisions that are appealable to the council. And from there, if the employee, or for that matter, the employer, feels that there was a prejudicial error in what the personnel board did, then the decision could be appealed into the court system. Just one other little feature of the personnel board structure is that personnel boards can sit as the adjudicators. I've been through personnel board hearings, and I'm sure that Mike has been through a lot of them as well. They can really be a mess when you have five folks who are not schooled in administrative procedure or the rules of evidence, hearing a complicated case relating to police discipline. Often, personnel board rules give an alternative, which is a hearing officer who would be conducting the hearing, and then making a recommendation of the personnel board. Some of them have systems, and I know City of Napa is an example of this, where they can bring in a hearing officer who will make rulings on issues of evidence, issues of procedure, and the personnel board then hears the whole case, but there's, in essence, an intermediary who is dealing with legal objections and the like. So just a little bit before we get into the rest of the discussion about personnel boards and how personnel boards fit into this particular framework.
Jeff, is that going to be, Jeff and I were talking about this earlier today, that I don't think we have a slide that per se talks about personnel boards. Is that going to be your discussion at this point on personnel boards? Should I weigh in on my thoughts about those as an appellate mechanism, or later?
You heard my thoughts clearly and concisely, Mr. Rains.
Okay. I'll be very quick then about my thoughts about personnel boards. As a matter of fact, I was talking yesterday to a county council in Santa Clara County. Santa Clara County has a personnel board that hears appeals, and I represent the Government Attorneys' Association down there, the DAs and the public defender, so I have a disciplinary case with a deputy DA that's on appeal to the personnel board. My thought about personnel boards as an appellate mechanism is seldom do they work effectively or efficiently. In Santa Clara County, my deputy DA was disciplined a year and a half ago, and they have yet to set a hearing for this fellow on very, very serious discipline because they're bogged down with doing other things, and they can only catch hearings as they catch hearings. So it's a very cumbersome process. The other problem I see as a employee representative with personnel boards, and Jeff alluded to this, is he said something about they can be kind of messy and they can be a mess. They can, because oftentimes, they are, you know, laypeople, hearing disciplinary appeals. And particularly in a lot of police cases, you're going to have issues about Bill of Rights violations, issues about search and seizure, and things like that, very technical, complicated issues. You often put those to the personnel boards, and I've been there, I've done a fair number of personnel boards, and what happens is when you start raising those issues with some of the folks, you see their eyes start glazing over, and it's like, well, you know, what are we doing here? And believe me, I've gotten the lecture more than once, like, Mr. Rains, why are we getting in all this technical stuff? Didn't your guy do it, or didn't he? And the answer is, but wait a minute, the technical stuff is legal stuff, and legal stuff is important when we're in this kind of hearing. So I have found typically that personnel boards are not very good adjudicators of these cases. Typically, when we have those, we're taking appeals to Superior Court. Where we're taking appeals to Superior Court, you're hiring lawyers, the officers are hiring lawyers, you're spending money, and a lot of money potentially, on those sorts of things. I think personnel boards tend to be lawyer's full employment acts, but I don't think that they get to deciding disciplinary cases fairly, and promptly, and appropriately. And so as an employee representative, you can bet, I'm not a fan of that process.
Thank you, Mike. So we're talking about different vehicles for hearing appeals of discipline, and I think often overlooked is the Administrative Procedures Act in California, which is codified in Government Code 11500. And it's a very, very comprehensive set of rules that afford due process for a broad range of employees in California. It's something that applies under the state personnel board system, for example. And the Administrative Procedures Act actually is something that has been incorporated into the firefighter's equivalent of the Bill of Rights, which is firefighter's Bill of Rights. And when you're dealing with serious discipline under the firefighter's Bill of Rights, you must use the Administrative Procedures Act unless you have binding arbitration, and that's the basic rule. So what is the Administrative Procedures Act? As I say here, it's a comprehensive appellate process. It involves some form of discovery, making it all the more complete. People come into a hearing with less of a prospect of being surprised by evidence or being surprised by witnesses. One of the key features, in my experience of the APA, is the utilization of administrative law judges from the California Office of Administrative Hearings. These folks, it's what they do. They are and act like, in my experience, Superior Court judges. They're very schooled in the rules of evidence. They've handled, you know, probably all of them have handled hundreds of disciplinary cases. And they really conduct the hearing in a manner that's not much different than what it would be like putting a case on in front of a Superior Court judge. The ALJ under the APA structure, either hears the case, or there's an alternative, kind of like what I was talking about with the Personnel Commission process, where the ALJ can sit as the presiding officer in a hearing that's held before the whole council. So as I was talking about with respect to Personnel Commissions, the ALJ in that capacity hears objections, rules on objections, makes recommendations regarding procedure and the like. Now, under APA, it's the ALJ who writes the decision. And the ALJ decisions, the last case that I had, which was under the firefighter's Bill of Rights, involving a termination of a firefighter, the ALJ's decision was about 50 pages long, single-spaced. I mean, it was a very, very carefully thought-through decision, addressing why she made particular rulings on evidence, actually suppressing some of the evidence that the employer wished to use because she felt that the evidence was in violation of a facet of the Bill of Rights, and then doing a careful analysis relating to how the facts woven to the question of whether there was cause for discipline, and addressed in that manner. Now, under the APA, the decision of the hearing officer is advisory only. It is subject to appeal to the council. In fact, the council needs to make the decision, even if there's not an appeal, because it's just advisory. So the decision, plus the full record, is handed over to the city council for determination. The city council then sits in closed session and makes a decision. If the decision is adverse to the employee, then that decision is appealable in Superior Court. So that's basically how the Administrative Procedures Act works. And I've got to tell you, from my experience with the APA, it is a marvelous piece of legislation in the sense that it, one, fully affords due process, but, two, features an adjudicator who's got very, very strong experience directly in the area of disciplinary rules that is germane to hearing disciplinary appeals.
I actually agree with Jeff in the sense that the APA provides very comprehensive rules on how these proceedings are governed and the type of evidence that gets taken, discovery, things like that. The APA really does do that, and I have no dispute with Jeff over that. What I think you buy into, if you go with an APA approach to this thing, is two things. One, you're buying into the lawyer's full employment act again, because you're going to have lawyers that are going to be doing a hearing either before the administrative law judge to begin with, or before the council and the administrative law judge. And that decision, if the ALJ makes a recommendation of the council, then there's going to be a further hearing by the council, and you will weigh into that record. You will be obligated to weigh into that record, to read that record, to make a decision based on that record. Transcripts, findings, whatnot, that occurred at a hearing. I don't know if you want to be spending your time mired down as adjudicators of disciplinary cases, and that's where the APA brings you, I think, into that process. And then finally, your decision, if it's adverse to the employee, then becomes appealable to Superior Court on a writ of administrative mandamus. Transcripts are lodged with the court, exhibits lodged with the court, briefing to the court, arguments to the court, and it doesn't stop at the Superior Court level. It can go on to the Court of Appeal. The reason I don't like it is that, one, it doesn't bring finality to a disciplinary case. It just provides appellate mechanisms whereby, frankly, the lawyers line their pockets, and oftentimes at the client's expense, both your expense as a city government and at the employee's expense, or at their union's expense, and I don't like it. You will hear, as we get to binding arbitration, I am a big fan of adjudicatory mechanisms that are prompt, that facilitate, in the most cases, fair and prompt decisions and final decisions, and we walk away and we live with those decisions. I don't think the APA procedure does that.
And a large part of the debate that Mr. Rains is inviting, I think, really belongs in our discussion of binding arbitration, so I'm not going to bite for the moment, Mike.
Got it.
So the next couple of slides, I just want to flip back and forth. First, we talk about advisory arbitration, and then we talk about binding arbitration. And I think that the focus of what we'll be talking about tonight is probably binding arbitration, but just a little bit about advisory, so we can see the differences. The basic mechanism for binding arbitration is the same as the mechanism for advisory arbitration. And that is, you have an arbitrator who's typically selected by the parties. You know, the arbitrator's names can actually be built into the memorandum of understanding, or you can get the list of names from the State Mediation Service or the American Arbitration Association. So the parties can, for example, define the qualifications of an arbitrator. They can say, for example, if we're going to use a list of arbitrators and we're going to strike from the list, they can say, well, we're only going to agree that we're only going to use a list that has exclusively the names of arbitrators who are members of the American Academy of Arbitrators. There are so many AAAs around, and I start thinking about my car insurance when I start batting around the AAAs. As is the case with binding arbitration, a full hearing is available under advisory arbitration, but it's less formal than court. The main difference, of course, is that it's advisory rather than binding, and that ties into Mike's argument about how, if you have something that's not binding, then that gives rise to further proceedings and the additional cost in staff time and so on and so forth that ties into that. Because a final decision by the city in an advisory arbitration framework is appealable to court. So I think that it may make sense for us to flip over pretty quickly to the issue of binding arbitration. And just as an introduction, there is no administrative review, and I think one of the most important features of binding arbitration is how strong the word "binding" is in this context. An arbitrator can make a decision that's absolutely wrong on the facts, that's absolutely wrong on the law, and still it is binding unless one of the very narrow exceptions to binding applies in a particular case. And if you had two or three hours to chat with me, I could give you a bunch of examples about how arbitrators have gone awry for various reasons in cases, but we could do nothing about it in terms of seeking court review. But before inviting Mike to respond, let me just flip over and say that the next two slides start with arguments pro, and I know that Mike is going to augment the arguments that are up there, and then we turn to arguments con.
Let me talk to you my thoughts about binding arbitration here. First of all, and I'm sure Jeff would say this, he's won cases he should have never won before arbitrators in binding arbitration, and he's lost cases he should have never lost. I'm the same way. What happens in binding arbitration is, yes, sometimes arbitrators mistake the facts, and they base their decision on mistaken facts. Sometimes they mistake the law, and they make their decisions on that basis. But you know what happens to those arbitrators? The word gets out in a hurry amongst the legal community that they screwed up the facts, or they screwed up the law, and no one uses them again. And so there's a self-selection process that goes on amongst the lawyers. And the lawyers learn who we can trust as to be an arbitrator, who will be fair to both sides. I mean, ultimately, when we select an arbitrator, we want him to be fair to our client, and I have no problem with him being fair to management. That's the way the system should work. And we know the ones that we view to be that way. But I have to tell you something, and I know, just because of talking to Jeff, that some of this controversy, some of the discussion tonight is spurred by a ruling by an arbitrator in a binding arbitration in this case, in the city. I don't know the facts of that case. I'm not going to speak to them. It wouldn't be right. It wouldn't be fair. But let me say this, that I don't think if you got, if this city got one decision that it viewed as not being fair or good to the city, that that should be the end of binding arbitration. I think that's the wrong view. I think it's a short-sighted view. Because all in all, what you're going to find is, my experience, Jeff's experience, we won some, we should lose, we lose some, we should win. Sometimes arbitrators, being human, make mistakes. But the good thing about binding arbitration is, again, it is reasonably expedient. The arbitrators are learned in the field. They are usually, not always, lawyers. They understand discipline law. Most of the arbitrators that we select for our cases, particularly police cases, have done police cases. They understand the issues, they understand search and seizure, and they are going to write a decision, and usually they're fairly lengthy. I just got a decision that was 102 pages in an arbitration, very well reasoned, worded, and I've gotten those cases and I've lost them. As long as we get decisions that are well reasoned, or at least there's an analysis there, you know, that's okay. And for the most part, you do. Once the binding arbitration award is issued, and Jeff's right, except in very few circumstances, it's not appealable. Fraud, things like that, would make a binding arbitration appealable, but the general rule is, they're not appealable, and with good reason. Because they're a mechanism to end the controversy between the employee and management, and if you lose, you walk away, and if you win, you walk away, and that's the way it is. And it certainly is, in terms of expediency, the best. In terms of the likelihood of fairness, I think it equals, if not excels, all of these other mechanisms. And in terms of the cost to the city, the cost of legal services, I think it is going to prove to be the least expensive. And if you're thinking about your finances, at least think about that. And I want to say one other thing. I mean, your employee group is here tonight. I assume that their representatives will talk to you. You know, a lot of employee representatives like this mechanism. I like this mechanism, but it's not because we win. I like this mechanism, but it's not because we win all the time, because we don't. It's because it is the best way to end these disputes in a prompt manner without these things hanging on for years and years and years and spending thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, of dollars.
Well, I don't agree with a lot of what Mike has said, as you might imagine. And I'd start just by saying arbitration is not prompt. I've had experiences in arbitration where it's taken a year to 18 months to have an arbitrator issue a decision. I've had experience in arbitration where it's supposed to be relatively prompt. I had one discipline case a few years ago where a union lawyer took 23 days to put on their case in front of an arbitrator, and I dare say that a judge would not have allowed that to happen. The judge probably would have said, you got 10 court days maximum, the next 10 days, not spread over 12 months, to put your case on, and I'm going to hold you to 60 hours total in putting your case on. That's what probably would have happened with that case in court. The idea that arbitrators are learned in the field and that they understand discipline law and all that sort of thing, I think that Mike is focusing a lot on the issue of how qualified are arbitrators generally, how qualified are labor arbitrators, and this is what I have to say about it. And I got to tell you, I've been a lawyer for 37 years. I started working with a union law firm. So I did arbitrations with a union law firm for a couple of years. I then worked for the state of California for about seven years in their labor agency, the Public Employment Relations Board, and I ended up being the general counsel of that board, and I intersected with arbitrators in arbitration cases regularly. And since 1987, this is what I've been doing. So I have that base of experience in dealing with arbitrators and in observing kind of how the arbitration process works. And, you know, to me, such a big aspect of the concerns that I have about arbitration, particularly binding arbitration, relates to the issue of, well, who are these arbitrators and can we get a fair shake using the arbitrators who are available out there? And the basic answer to that, and by the way, some of my best friends are arbitrators. I've got to say that, even though they probably will hate me after this presentation, I've got to say that. But, you know, the answer to the question of can we get a fair shake is, it depends. And it just, it really depends on one little thing, which is one little piece of paper that you get from the State Mediation Service or the American Arbitration Association. When you say, we're going to arbitration, they send you a list of five or seven names. And you get that list of five or seven names, and the question is, what do you do with it? How qualified are these people? To what extent are they researchable in terms of their experience, in terms of their track And can I see what they've written? Can I check out their references? And typically, the answer to that is no. Arbitrators, in my experience, by and large, are very political. And I mean that not in a derogatory sense, because we live in politics. But what I mean by that is they need to satisfy both sides to stay in business. And, you know, Mike basically said that, well, we know the bad ones from the good ones, and the bad ones are just not going to survive. Well, that's really not true, because they still stay on a list, and if they're unacceptable to management, they'll be acceptable to unions typically. And if they're acceptable, they're going to be on a list, and we're going to have a list that we're going to strike from, and we may end up having a bad list, which means it's going to be hard to find a good person on that list, and the person who gave us a bad rap could be back on the stand being the arbitrator. They are often not schooled in the rules of evidence or procedure. It takes maybe five years of being a neutral to be an arbitrator. They then put your name on a list if you had references, who vouch for your good character and for your intelligence and for your experience doing labor work. And a lot of this is on-the-job training for arbitrators. You know, I know arbitrators who have been arbitrators for 50 years, and a lot of them are brilliant, and I've run into arbitrators who've been arbitrators for two or three years, and they've handled heavy-duty discipline cases, and they're over their head. And we don't have the ability to say no necessarily to any particular arbitrator, because when we get a list, you flip the coin. If I lose, then I go first, or do you go first, Mike? We always play that game.
Right.
But you know how it works. You flip the coin, and you end up with the least unacceptable person. Many arbitrators who come into police cases are not experienced doing police matters. They may be experienced in labor generally, but they may not be experienced in police matters, and there's a real problem with that. Because when an arbitrator hears a police chief who's, you know, typically profoundly experienced and who made a very, very tough decision if we're dealing with serious disciplinary action, the question is, is the arbitrator going to observe and uphold the authority that that chief has? Is the arbitrator not going to be second-guessing the chief? And the less experienced arbitrators are in dealing with police matters, the more likely it is that they're going to be second-guessing a chief. And I've got to tell you that one of the key differences, and this is something that not a lot of people realize, one of the key differences in looking at binding arbitration versus any other form of disciplinary appeal is that in any other case, when it goes into court, California courts apply a very, very strong presumption in favor of the employer's discretionary decision about what discipline should attach. So if a police chief says, there's misconduct, I think it's terminable. Another chief might have said it's suspendable, but this chief's decision that it's terminable is given great respect by the courts. That's the law in California. That is not the law in arbitration processes. I bring those cases in every time I have a disciplinary case in a police department. I've never really seen an arbitrator ever embrace those cases. So we have second guessing. Arbitrators often also apply a higher standard to proof, as I think you're familiar with. Sometimes arbitrators, even though the general rule is, preponderance of the evidence, an arbitrator will say, well, I think that this is a serious enough case where I'm going to hold the chief to a higher standard. I'm going to hold the chief to a standard of clear and convincing evidence or even to the criminal standard of beyond a reasonable doubt. And then, of course, we've talked about the losing party having no right of judicial review. So when we put it all together, I've just got to say that a key feature of my concern about arbitration, binding arbitration, is you don't know who you're getting as an arbitrator. And that is, to an extent, why, and I give this speech whenever I have the opportunity to give it, I want to say that, what I'm about to say has nothing to do with what's going on in this particular city relative to bargaining. But when you look at this basic problem in arbitration, you can see that it's solvable to a degree by having more authority over who the decision-maker may be. And that's why in many places now, folks are using retired judges rather than arbitrators, because they're experienced in trial work, they're neutral, and they're not beholden to any particular party or to the politics of labor arbitration.
Well, Jeff said a mouthful. I'll try to be brief in my response. First of all, you don't know who you're getting. That's not true, because when you request a list of arbitrators from state mediation, they send you the names, they send you their resumes, they send you decisions they've authored. You can reference their decisions to see what they've said in other cases and other decisions. And frankly, the other thing that is very true, and Jeff knows it, is that I, as a labor-side attorney, have a cadre of other attorneys I call all the time and say, hey, do you have any experience with this particular arbitrator? And they tell me what they are. The management group has their own connections, and they do the same. There is a incredible vetting of these lawyers, these arbitrators, that goes on before an arbitrator is selected, and we aren't just out there, you know, picking and choosing blindly. That's not true. If you're hiring a good firm, like Jeff's firm, to do discipline cases, you can darn well bet he knows exactly the background of that arbitrator, what they've done in the past, the cases they've decided and how they've done them. That's one. Two, as Jeff suggested, there may even be a binding arbitration thing. Some agencies actually have a standing list that they put together with their associations. We have it in some of our employers, where both sides put names on a standing list, and there's a name of five different arbitrators that if there's a discipline case, you pick from. Both sides going in know who they are. They've selected them as being fair to both sides, and so there's a way of having a binding arbitration mechanism where both sides weigh into the names. So that's true, too. The burden of proof thing is, I think, overstated. We have had some decisions where arbitrators say, this is a very, very serious case, and because it's a very, very serious case and it ends an employee's livelihood, I'm going to make sure that the proof is there. I'm not going to base my decision on suspicion or hunches. And going back to the theme I raised at the beginning of my talk, isn't that good business? Don't you want your employees to know that they're not going to be fired on the base of hunches or suspicions or rumors? Don't you want to have an appeal mechanism that bases a decision on proof when a livelihood is gone, exterminated, and a person pays the price? So I think the arbitration process is the closest, the finest process, to get us there, because ultimately, the parties know who they're getting, they know their background, they're going to, you know, somebody's going to be unhappy in an arbitration, somebody may be happy. Jeff is right. Sometimes arbitrators will split the baby. They do that on occasions. But I can't tell you how many times I have lost arbitrations where arbitrators absolutely landed on me and my client with no mercy, because they didn't like what they heard. Or the other way around, where they've landed on the employer for the way they treated the employee. That happens in the real world. Once in a while, you'll get a split-the-baby arbitrator, but it's not, in my experience, the norm. I still think binding arbitration, all in all, offers the best appellate mechanism and doesn't mire the counsel down in disciplinary appeals and decision-making and doesn't lead to expensive appeals to Superior Court on the average.
Okay. Well, thank you to both of our speakers. That does conclude our study session presentation. If there are any questions the council has or...
So anyone have any questions? Councilmember Otaki.
Okay. So first, I'll try and keep this brief. First of all, I want to thank both of you. Very much appreciate that. Both Jeff Sloan and Mike Rains, very much appreciate your input on it. I also wanted to thank Gina, and I also want to thank the officers that are here tonight. I want to make it very clear upfront before I ask any questions that this has nothing to do about, in any way, our very high respect for our officers, for what they do every day, keeping our community safe, putting their lives on the line, and their right to have a fair and objective due process, right? No question, you know, we understand that. It's really about how can we improve. Without getting into the specifics, we had a bad, an outcome that outraged our community. It outraged us, and it outraged our community. We are accountable to our community on that. And so what we're trying to do is, and why we appreciate your being here, is to, as objectively as possible, look at different alternatives to avoid the outcome, but still respect and preserve a fair, I think you said fair, thorough, and objective due process. So having said that, I wanted to make sure I kind of understood a little bit. I wanted to ask a little bit about the Administrative Procedures Act, the APA process, and the ALJ, the administrative law judge. Did I get the impression, now, I know, Mr. Rains, you obviously are advocating binding arbitration.
Yes.
But what is your opinion about the APA at a ALJ-type process? Just want to make sure I understood that.
Well, first of all, I agree with Jeff that the APA has comprehensive set of rules that govern the conduct of these hearings. I like that, because both sides generally know what those rules are, and they know what the rules are going in. There's rules about discovery, there's rules about the taking of evidence. I think all that's good, because it puts both sides on the same playing field that way. I've had mixed experience with ALJs out of the Office of Administrative Hearings. I found some to be really quite good and quite bright. I found some not to really be that with it, in my opinion, that good. But, you know, you're going to find that in any profession. I mean, some people are really great and some people aren't. So a mixed bag about dealing with ALJs, and some I've had to educate about police procedures because they didn't understand police procedure, search and seizure, stuff like that. So we literally ended up calling witnesses to have to educate them in areas that I would have thought, you know, most hearing officers would know. I've had some of those experiences. I think the biggest issue I have with the process is, as Jeff pointed out, their decision is going to be advisory to you folks, and that means that ultimately, you will be the final decision-maker for the city. And that means you're going to have to review the record, and you're going to have to take time to do it. My pet peeve as a lawyer in those kinds of processes, and we see this, we have a Monterey County client where we've had that process, is that the Board of Supervisors there doesn't review the record. They have county counsel write an opinion without reviewing the record, and I think that's challengeable in Superior Court. If you're going to be doing your jobs and doing them, you know, as you should be doing them conscientiously, you're going to have to review the record, and that may involve hours of time, obviously discussions, and then your final decision, such as it is, might be appealable further to Superior Court, entangling the court in the discipline process and possibly even going on to the Court of Appeal in the Supreme Court. That's just, that's why I don't like it, is that it prolongs the process and it's very, very expensive. I think that's my...
Relative to, for example, Personnel Review Board, you find an ALJ to be at least more educated with respect to the rule of law and evidentiary processes and things like that.
That's correct. I think as a comparable, yes, you would, I would expect the ALJs from the Office of Administrative Hearings, they are by far more educated, as a general rule, and much more experienced to hear these cases than general personnel boards. No question about that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sloan and Mr. Rains, for coming tonight and giving that presentation. And again, I want to say thank you to the officers who are here. I would agree with Mr. Sloan's statement that fairness is a given, and we always want to have fairness. I mean, that is absolutely true, and you want to have fairness on both sides. And then the last thing that Mr. Sloan added to that, but it doesn't mean binding arbitration furthers that goal. And that's, you know, the questions that we have. So one of the things that we implemented with the PMA here, for example, and I'd just like to hear your opinion on this, is that the arbitrator that we could choose could be a retired San Mateo County judge. And what are your thoughts on that?
Jeff, you want?
Well, I think I know, Mr. Rains, I'd like to hear yours.
You want to hear my thoughts?
Yes.
My first question would be, who would that be? And I'll tell you why. Because we inherently assume, some people always inherently assume that because I made it through law school and got a law degree, I'm a smart guy. And that's not necessarily true. And I say that just because somebody got appointed a judge, that doesn't make them learned and schooled in the area of employee discipline. And so the question would be, what did that judge know about due process? What does that judge know about the Peace Officer Bill of Rights? From my experience, taking rips of mandate into Superior Court on decisions made by personnel boards and city councils on advisory review, Superior Court judges don't wallow themselves on a daily basis into the Peace Officer Bill of Rights. They get into search and seizure stuff, they may even get into excessive force stuff, which is typically, you know, a lot of those issues will come up in police cases. But a lot of times, judges, just simply, just because they were Superior Court judges, they may have spent their career in civil or probate or doing other stuff. And so my question is, is this judge uniquely qualified because of experience with police issues and police law? If they are, that's probably a good decision. But I think that's going to, frankly, eliminate a lot of retired judges. I would want to be very careful in the selection of that judge. That's my...
Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Sloan, I'd love your opinion as well.
In my experience, when you're dealing with, I mean, Mike's right in the sense that not every judge is an excellent judge. But what we do know from experience is that when we have judges who have sat on the bench for 20, 25, 30 years, they've done a lot of trials. for 20, 25, 30 years, they've done a lot of trials. They understand the rules of evidence. They understand the rules of procedure. They understand burden of proof. They understand how to judge credibility. And they also are schooled at research, so that the things that they don't know, they research fully, and even the things that they think they know, they're going to research fully, which is different than what a lot of arbitrators do. So in terms of the exact appointment mechanism for bringing in a Superior Court judge, I'm not sure of exactly what perfect mechanism there may be for that. Obviously, the best mechanism would be for the parties mutually agree on a particular retired judge in the county. I mean, that would be the best mechanism. There may well be other mechanisms, but I think that that mechanism, you know, itself would cut through the issues that Mike is raising a concern about.
Okay, yeah, and I think Mr. Rains also brought up the fact that some agencies have standing lists, so that's where that comes to play.
Correct.
Which could be beneficial to both parties.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Do we have any public comment? And we do, from Mr. Sean Howell, who is representing the Menlo Park POA Association.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Sean Howell, I'm with the Mustagney Law Firm, and our law firm represents the POA. I am going to bounce around just a little bit here. I'm going to try and address some of the points that were raised by both Mr. Sloan and Mr. Rains. I agree with both of them on many points. I did want to cover a couple issues. Why don't I just cover this retired judge issue? I agree with Mr. Rains. A retired judge typically is not going to have the same level of experience and knowledge. And I've had retired judges hear cases, they have to be educated a lot more, you have to call additional witnesses, which to Mr. Sloan's point, creates a problem, it lengthens the process. Most of the arbitrators, and this is a point that maybe you should know, when you're making the request to state mediation conciliation services, you can make a directed request, you can actually say, hey, I'd like to have an arbitrator in this geographic region, or that geographic region. I'd like an arbitrator with experience in law enforcement, firefighter issues, whatever. And they will provide you a list of people that specialize in those areas. So it really does streamline the process. What I want to make very clear here tonight is that binding arbitration is not a function, despite what some of the media attention has promulgated, that it's something to do with the unions wanting to get a more-than-fair shake, that it's somehow binding arbitration is skewed towards the employee, and that employees win these arbitration cases handily every single time they take them to hearing. That is not the case. I wish it were the case, okay? Mr. Rains will attest to this. I wish I won 50% of my cases, okay? That's just the statistics. It's not normal to win at arbitra, even at binding arbitration, when there's a substantial disciplinary matter before the arbitrator. So what it's really about is finances. It's about mitigating the cost to the city, and from my perspective, to the employee, that's who I care about. The city has an opportunity to file a writ on advisory arbitration, or a panel hearing, or any one of those, save binding arbitration. The employee has to pay for that themselves. The city can just walk right over and take $60,000, give it to a Mr. Sloan, or an attorney like him, that represents the cities. The employee has to come out of pocket to pay for my time. That's not covered all the time by legal defense funds, or any other collateral source, and my time is even probably a third of what city attorneys usually charge, but it's still $15,000 to $20,000 for a writ. So if you had a process, let's say, that ends with a decision in favor of the employee, and then the city decides, or the department decides, we want to take this up on a writ. The employee had their due process, they won the case, the decision clearly explains that they should receive their job back, let's say in a termination case. The city could take a writ up, and that employee could have no funds, because they just got fired, and have no way to defend themselves. They then lose by default, because they can't answer the complaint. That is part of their due process. That's why binding arbitration's important. They have money and coverage, their dues go to take care of things up to the hearing process, not the writ process after. And that's why we'd really like to, we'd really like, we would really encourage a binding arbitration provision. Let me just cover something else here, bounce around a little bit.
Madam Clerk, could you start the three minutes?
Yeah, it's down to two minutes, I'm watching it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, also, to Mr. Sloan's point, I just want to, I'm bouncing around here a little bit. Mr. Sloan talked about attorneys dragging cases out 23 days, what have you. That's this officer who has put his life on the line in some cases, that's their opportunity to save their, not their job, this isn't a McDonald's fry cook. This is a peace officer, this is their career. If they want to take 30 days to put their case on, give them 30 days. And if a retired judge would cut them off at 60 hours, five days, or 10 days, or what have you, I certainly would not be in favor of that, nor would the POA. Also, Superior Court decisions, they actually, what they do is look at the final administrative decision, which isn't necessarily the decision of the chief of police, sheriff, what have you. They're looking at your decision. If it's advisory arbitration to you, we're appealing your decision on a writ, not the chief's decision. So the Superior Court is looking to see if you abused your discretion, that's our standard, we have to show you abused your discretion. They're looking to you. So we may have a great chief, and right now, we got a great city council. We, and believe me, that's what the POA feels, but we have to look in the long game. We don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now. We don't know if we're going to have a great chief 15 years from now. We have to protect against due process violations. Many times, due process violations are a bar to the city or the department disciplining that employee, and binding arbitration is the only way to ensure that they get their due process, and that if those violations take place, the city or the department's feet are held to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Please don't take my comment as having any bearing on the substance of what you're saying, I just am charged with keeping time in the meeting. Do we have any other questions on this item, before we go ahead and close it at this time? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, it was very thorough, we appreciate it. We're going to go ahead now and move to our regular session items, and the first thing that we need to do, again, just real quickly to note for the record our role, Councilmember Klein is not with us this evening, and I'd like to go ahead and have everybody stand at this time, so that we can partake in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of proclamations, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and come down, and do we have our K-9 unit? Can I went to get them? So we're going to go ahead and take things out of order, we're going to take item A3 first. Officer Knopf and Gert, if you could go ahead and please join me up here. This year, the city council is making a special effort at every one of our city council meetings to set aside some time to try to honor those in our community who have gone to great lengths in contributing in making Menlo Park into what I believe is the most special place to live on the peninsula. Tonight, we have three proclamations honoring four of our hometown heroes. Since the Middle Ages, I kid you not, dogs have been used in law enforcement to protect communities from criminals. Villages actually in the Middle Ages would come together, and they'd join together, and they'd pool their money, so that they could go ahead and buy the constable a dog, to protect their community from criminals. In present-day, K-9 units are used throughout the world. And in the United States, they're used for bomb and weapons detections, to subdue assailants, and to assist in man hunts. These four, like guardians of public safety, are often paired for their entire career with specific handlers. Tonight, we honor Menlo Park Police Officer Steve Knopf, and his police dog partner, Gert, as we celebrate Gert's retirement from the Menlo Park Police Force. Now, I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation, and I have a proclamation for the officer, and then afterwards, we're going to go ahead and honor Gert specifically. Whereas Steve W. Knopf joined the Menlo Park Police Department in January 2001, and whereas Officer Knopf began his tour of K-9 patrol with his partner, Gert, in July of 2006, and whereas Officer Knopf received certifications on his partner, Gert, in the area of bomb detection, advanced tracking, and tactical K-9 deployment, and whereas Officer Knopf dedicated over 2,000 hours of training over the last seven years, and 1,300 hours of care for his partner, Gert, and whereas Officer Knopf and Gert handled over 300 regional assists, searches, and numerous apprehensions, and whereas Officer Knopf and Gert performed in the Whitehead Tyson Trials for the past six years, competing against other K-9 teams throughout Northern California, and winning third place in searching last year, and whereas Officer Knopf and Gert placed third and fourth out of 25 K-9s in the Western State's K-9s Trial for Explosives Detection, and whereas Officer Knopf and Gert provided dignitary protections to two federal judges, the Prime Minister of Argentina, Secretary of State Condoleezza Rice, Vice President Dick Cheney, and twice for President Barack Obama during his campaign run in California, and whereas Officer Knopf and Gert provided demonstrations at the Veterans Affairs for poly-trauma, brain-injured veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan, and whereas Gert has been retired from service after six years of dedicated service, and whereas Officer Knopf has dedicated six years to the Menlo Park K-9 Program contributing to its overall success, now therefore be it resolved that the Menlo Park City Council hereby recognizes and appreciates Gert's dedication and loyalty to his partner, Officer Knopf, and to the K-9 Program. Be it further resolved that the Menlo Park City Council congratulates and expresses our sincere gratitude to Officer Steve W. Knopf for his outstanding service to the city and the people of Menlo Park. Now, I have a dog. I've had dogs all my life, and I know they understand the moment, and I asked them specifically if I could do this, because I believe dogs appreciate it. I was a little afraid, they tell me this is going to be okay, so let's cross our fingers. Would you like to say a word, few words, Officer?
Sure. Good evening. It's been an honor for the last, excuse me, last seven years to be a K-9 handler. I've been in law enforcement as a reserve police officer in Palm Springs, as a deputy sheriff in Oklahoma, and with Menlo Park Police Department now for 13 years, and by far, this is probably the most rewarding position there is. You grow a bond with the animal, you know, you expect to, you put your life with that dog, and you expect him to be your friend, your partner. He's been part of my family, he goes home with you every night, so you appreciate the effort you put into it by what you, the results you see, and it's been a, it's been a good run. Thank you.
Now, our second proclamation this evening honors a relatively new face in Menlo Park, but one who has already made a significant impact in the lives of those we hold most dear, our children. Mr. Eric Bermanster, the principal of Hillview Middle School, will you please join me at the podium?
Can you bring the microphone?
Yeah, absolutely. What's your name?
He's not retiring.
He's not retiring?
Yeah, this is Gideon.
Hey, Gideon. Mr. Bermanster, I want to say I truly believe there is no more honorable profession of being a teacher and an education professional. And I'm not just saying that because I'm married to one. It goes without saying that for you to have accomplished so much, and to have distinguished yourself in the manner that you have in the service of children, both in Menlo Park and in other communities, is truly worth our recognition, and I'm proud to honor you this evening with this proclamation. Now, many of you may be wondering what I'm talking about, who are here this evening. Sometimes proclamations speak for themselves, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it Whereas Eric Bermanster joined the Menlo Park City School District in August of 2012 as principal of Hillview Middle School, and whereas in July of 2013, Eric Bermanster was named a finalist in the 2014 MetLife National Association of Secondary School Principals' National Principal of the Year Program for his significant contributions to student achievement. And whereas prior to joining the Menlo Park City School District, Eric Bermanster was recognized as the Association of California School Administrators 2012 Middle Schools' Principal of the Year for his leadership at Union Middle School in San Jose, and whereas in March of 2013, Eric Bermanster was selected from dozens of nominees in K-12 and higher education as the winner of the Multiplier of the Year Award by the Wiseman Group, a leadership research and development center headquartered in the Silicon Valley. And whereas in leading the Hillview Climate Team since 2012, Eric Bermanster has helped reduce suspensions 92% in the last three years, and established a restorative justice program. And whereas Eric Bermanster led a design thinking process that transformed the master schedule for Hillview students, and created an innovative program of mini-courses that will involve a variety of community members, help our students experience numerous opportunities to ignite their interest in learning, and whereas in August of 2013, Eric Bermanster allowed four students to shave his head as a reward for academic achievement, to impress upon them how important their education was to him personally. And whereas Eric Bermanster has engaged and been responsive to the concerns of the Menlo Park residents who home surround the Hillview Middle School campus, and whereas Eric Bermanster's leadership and vision has already made a meaningful impact in the lives of students in the Menlo Park City School District and beyond, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ray Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, do hereby recognize and congratulate Eric Bermanster for his many accomplishments, and thank him for his leadership, dedication, commitment, and service to the City of Menlo Park, its residents, and the students and families of Hillview Middle School. Mr. Bermanster. Please say your...
I just, I just want to say what an honor it is to serve this community, it truly is remarkable, and I really could not be standing here today were it not for the amazing teachers that I get to serve, the amazing students who I get to help raise, and the amazing parents who support us at every turn. I want to invite all of you to pay attention to what's going to happen at Hillview on March 17th through 21st, and extend my personal invitation to you to be involved in our amazing mini-course program. We have 43 courses, week-long courses, that our students are going to get to participate in, one of which is using design thinking and partnering with Stanford University Design School to help redesign downtown Menlo Park, and like to invite all of our city council members to come share with us their vision for downtown, and also come hear our presentation... members to come share with us their vision for downtown, and also come hear our presentation specifically to the city council and the Planning Commission regarding our students' vision of what downtown Menlo Park could be like. Thank you so much for this honor, and thank you for the opportunity to serve this community.[613.41][613.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Please stay, because after we finish this last proclamation, we're all going to take a picture together. Okay.
And also, through the mayor, just, I wanted to let everybody know that at Freewheel Brewery on Friday, there is beer with Buermeister.[631.04][631.04](LAUGHTER).
All right. Adols only. All right, and now our last proclamation of the evening for someone who really embodies what it means to be a hometown hero. Ms. Rich, can you join me up here?[651.16][651.16](APPLAUSE). So I'm going to take everybody back in a time machine quickly. The year was 1998. The top eight rated shows on television were Friends and ER. Titanic won the best picture at the Academy Awards. Bill Clinton was President of the United States, and a skinny, strong-armed quarterback from Tennessee named Peyton Manning was the number-one pick in the NFL Draft. And in Menlo Park, in November of that year, a woman named Laura Linkletter Rich, who is the Ensignal PTA President, decided to run for the Menlo Park City School District Board of Education. Tonight, we find ourselves 16 years later, and we can measure 1998's effect on our culture. In terms of entertainment, Jennifer Aniston, George Clooney, and Leonardo DiCaprio still dominate our entertainment. The Clintons are still forced in American politics, and Peyton Manning has turned out to be a decent quarterback, so I am told. And here in Menlo Park at home, arguably, no locally-elected official in Menlo Park has had a greater impact on our property values and the lives of our most precious assets, our children, than our retiring school board member Laura Linkletter Rich. I'm going to go ahead now and read her proclamation. Whereas Laura Linkletter Rich was first elected to the Menlo Park City Elementary School Board of Education in November 1998 and served as a school board member for over 15 years, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich served on numerous committees to improve the Menlo Park City Elementary School District throughout her tenure on the Board of Education, including the Policy Committee, the Facilities Planning Committee, the Communications Committee, the Enrollment Growth Ad-Hoc Committee, the Community Report Committee, and the Strategic Planning Committee, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich exemplary serviced the Menlo Park City School District, in addition to her Board of Education service, also included serving as Ensignal Parent/Teacher Association Vice President, Ensignal Parent/Teacher Association President, Ensignal Site Counselor Chair, Laurel Book Fair Chair, and Parent/Teacher Association Council President, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich used her design talents to create beautiful websites, brochures, and other materials for four successful parcel tax campaigns and three successful bond campaigns in support of the Menlo Park City School District. I'm going to take a pause. I want you to think about what that effect has had on our, on the lives of our children. That's really, that's just remarkable. And whereas Laura Linkletter Rich, in the past, acted as the webmaster for two school-parent teacher organizations, the Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation, as well as for the Menlo Park City School District itself, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich also served the California School Boards Association as a regional director in addition to serving on various committees and in other leadership roles, again, then pause, those are real committees, folks, all right? That is a lot of work and a lot of traveling. And whereas Laura Linkletter Rich received a Master's in Governance from the California School Boards Association, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich served on the San Mateo County School Board Association in many capacities and serving as president, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich decided to retire on January 14th, 2014, and whereas Laura Linkletter Rich's leadership has made a difference in the lives of thousands of students in the Menlo Park City School District and beyond, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ray Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, do hereby recognize and offer thanks to Laura Linkletter Rich for her leadership, dedication, commitment, and service to the City of Menlo Park, its residents, and to the students and families of the Menlo Park City School District.[903.44][903.44](APPLAUSE).
So, he made me feel pretty old with that one, I got to say. You know, it's, it has been a long run. It is such an honor to serve this community, and the thing that makes Menlo Park special is the community and the parents, and everyone comes together to support our children, and that makes, that makes a community. It's our children, it's our future, and it has been an absolute pleasure. The schools are in great shape, and I think what's ahead is really exciting, and I will enjoy watching it from retirement. But thank you, everybody.[952.82][952.82](APPLAUSE).
And I'd like to, I'd like to invite Ms. Rich and Mr. Buermeister to come and take a picture.
Can I say something to Laura?
Absolutely.
On top of all of that that she did, when I was on a committee, a state education legislation committee, she took time out of her day to come and advise me on which bills for the state she thought were necessary and which ones she thought were not necessary. And on top of that, I've known Laura really well for about eight years. She was actually my teacher. Laura taught me how to needlepoint. She is an amazing, accomplished, dedicated person, and I hope that you will become even more involved in other things in the community because I have a great deal of respect for you. Thank you so much.[1001.82][1001.82](LAUGHTER).
Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to Item A4, a joint presentation by the Menlo Park City School District and the Public Works Department regarding the new school on O'Connor Site in the Willow's Neighborhood. And we're going to go ahead now, I'd like to introduce Chip Taylor, our Public Works Director, and I believe Chip will be introducing representatives from the school district.
Oh, and through the mayor, sorry, before you start, hello, everybody. I have to recuse myself on this issue. It's because I live within 500 feet of the new school, so I will be outside until you are done with this topic, and then I'll come back in. Thank you. And is that, may I just confirm that with the city attorney?
That's correct.
All right. Good evening. Chip Taylor, I'm the Public Works Director. If you look in your programs, I'll be filling in for Jesse Kurian tonight. He unfortunately was ill, but he and Nikki Nagaya from our Transportation Department helped to put together part of the presentation. So first off, I wanted to introduce Ahmad Shiklosami and Maurice Geils from the school district. I believe Maurice will be talking as the superintendent, and then Ahmad will go into some of the details. And then I wanted to add on to the end to talk a little bit about the city's process and how we are, aren't involved in the new school process. So with that, I'll hand it over to Maurice.
Good evening, city council members. Maurice Geisel, Superintendent of the Menlo Park City School District. First of all, I wanted to say a heartfelt thank you for honoring both Eric Buermeister and Laura Rich. That meant a lot to us, and we appreciate that. And also, thank you for inviting us to present information that we have presented up-to-date so far to our governing board. This is really exciting to be thinking about opening a new school. Like Laura was talking about, it's everyone in our community that comes together to support our children, who are our future, and this is really an exciting adventure, and I look forward to updating you, that's both Ahmad and I. Again, the kids are our future, and this is about our community and particularly about the kids. So, tonight's agenda, and I think we have it up there, Chip, is we need to tell the story, go into the background of how we got here today, things about enrollment growth, the growing popularity of the school district, as well as things like why we put the school and the location that it's at in terms of potential designs, benefits, of course, to our community, reviewing our current planning and what we have reviewed again with the board to date, the proposed date and schedule we've been talking with them about, review options of the design plans, and to look at the school access design options as well, and then next step. So I'm going to turn it over to Ahmad for the continuation of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and members of the community. As Maurice Geisel indicated, we're excited about this project, but before I kind of go into the cool stuff with the design and what we're trying to do, I want to give a little bit of background of how we got here. As a testament to, you know, our community and the desire to live here, that's really pushed our attendance up in the last decade. We were a school of only 1,400 students back in 1988, and in the last 10 years, our population, student population has increased by 40%. So we did an updated enrollment projection study last year, and that's where we reached the conclusion that we need to, first of all, release the pressures on our existing schools and to prepare for increased growth in enrollment in the next decade to come. Currently, our school district enrollment is 2,900 students, and we've grown 40% in the last 10 years, and currently, if you have students in our schools, you know that they are all overcrowded, we have, you know, heavy traffic, and we are beyond our master targeted enrollments at every school. And so, we need the new school in order to decrease that and also to build additional capacity. We hope to have a capacity between 3,200 and 3,300 students so that we can handle the potential growth that we estimate that may occur in Menlo Park in the next decade to come. The good news is that the new Hillview Middle School will be able to meet the increased enrollment projections that we've already projected. It was built with some additional capacity. Back in June 2013, as a result of our study, the school board approved the construction of a new school at our Elliott Campus. It is the only campus, other campus that we have, which was leased to the German American National School, and they also put a bond measure on the ballot. As I indicated, that the new school will decrease, will increase our capacity and provide relief to the overcrowding that's occurring at our three other elementary schools. The new school will be designed as a 3-5 school. It will be designed for 360 students, and it will work in, with a Laurel school, and it will basically encompass pretty much the Laurel attendance boundary, and I'll go into that detail in a little bit. And we were fortunate enough that the voters approved with 75% the $23 million bond measure in November. This map shows our attendance boundaries, and I want to orient you to the map. This is El Camino, that's the railroad tracks, this is Middlefield, and this is Valparaiso. Hillview Middle School is here, Oaknoll School is here, Ensignal, Laurel, and the current O'Connor Site is located in this corner of the Willow's Neighborhood. What I, what is important to note is that the area in yellow is the Laurel attendance boundary. All the students in this attendance boundary, when the children are in fourth and fifth grade, attend Ensignal School. Everyone in the yellow, in the red, attends Ensignal K-5. And it's important to note that because current traffic patterns push all of these students who are very far away from Ensignal School to have to either drive, we have some students who bike, very few students walk from that area, and we have, Samtrans provides some busing, and we provide some busing for our smaller students. So by creating a school in this neighborhood, the dynamics is going to change drastically, and I'll go into that a little further later as well. So the benefits of this school is to reduce enrollment at our current schools. In addition, we're going to provide a neighborhood school for the Willow's community, and this is a, it's a great benefit to that entire community who has not had a local school that serves them and has to have gone several miles away to Laurel and to Ensignal. It will reduce traffic to Ensignal, Laurel, and Oaknoll, specifically along the Middlefield and Willow Corridor, and because of the overcrowding at Ensignal School, we are currently sending many of our students to Oaknoll. So a lot of the students in that Ensignal attendance boundary are not able to go to their local school and have been going to Oaknoll. Luckily, all our schools are great, so it's not a major issue for our parents, but that commute is an issue for the parents and is an issue for the community at large. As a neighborhood school, it's going to increase walking and biking opportunities for students, and we're going to provide improved field space and a new multipurpose gym for community use, and I've been in early discussions with city staff regarding joint use opportunities with city similar to what we have at Hillview and Oaknoll. I wanted to put this slide in because it represents where all our current K-2 students live in the Laurel attendance boundary, and these will be the students who will be eventually going to the new O'Connor School. And again, to orient you to, this is 101, and this is Willow. And so, what our hope is, is the majority of these students are going to be walking and biking to that school because of the proximity of that. And one of the benefits of the Willow neighborhood is that it is one of the few neighborhoods that has most continuous sidewalks. There's a few gaps missing, and Chip's going to talk about that a little bit later, but I think that that's going to reduce overall traffic to the school as a neighborhood school and as a 3-5. Those are the grades that most students feel independent enough to walk and bike to school. Just wanted to review a little bit about our process to date. We've held four meetings since November 2013 when the bond passed. They have all been at the board level. Three of them have been dedicated to the O'Connor planning, and one of them was at a general board meeting. We have an informational website, and we've taken a lot of input from the community, and we've had, we've met with members of the community I personally have met, I know our board members have met, and so has our superintendent. So we are engaged in an outreach effort that I think is, we've got a lot of different and good ideas from the community, and we're looking at all of them. We have a site design advisory committee that's assisting in design development, and once the bond was passed, we outreach to members of the community, parents, and residents to be part of that advisory committee. Our school board has looked enough to walk and bike to school. Just wanted to review a little bit about our process to date. We've held four meetings since November 2013, when the bond passed. They have all been at the Board level. Three of them have been dedicated to the O'Connor planning, and one of them was at a general Board meeting. We have an informational website, and we've taken a lot of input from the community, and we've had, we've met with members of the community I personally have met, I know our Board members have met, and so has our superintendent. So, we are engaged in an outreach effort that I think is, we've got a lot of different and good ideas from the community, and we're looking at all of them. We have a Site Design Advisory Committee that's assisting in design development, and once the bond was passed, we outreach to members of the community, parents, and residents to be part of that advisory committee. Our school board has looked at various design options, both in school design and access, and looked at cost estimates, and so that's been ongoing as well. We've done a traffic study that was conducted in collaboration with city staff, and Chip's going to go into the details of that study in a little bit. Ongoing, we have a geotechnical study, a Phase One preliminary environmental study, and as we define our project, we're in that step of defining the project. Once the project gets defined, we'll complete our environmental review and complete the proper process by which we have to file documents and have them approved. We've met with the Public Works Department and Transportation Manager to discuss a lot of these issues early on. We've met with the CDE representative and also DSA representatives as well. I don't want to go into too much detail, this is just a little quick planning, design, construction schedule, but what I did want to indicate is it's very important for us that our school board approve our schematic plans on the 11th of February, and after that, that the project gets defined, and then we'll complete our environmental review. We'll have it to determine if we're going to do a NECDAC or a full EIR and proceed with that, and then it'll also allow our, us to begin design development in the building and submit those plans to the state by August 2014, because the state takes, you know, five to six months to review and approve those documents. And what we're hoping is that on May 15th, the day after Geis has to vacate the site, we can begin construction, because we have an aggressive construction schedule and plan to open the new school in August 2016. I want to kind of go through what we think is the exciting portion of the project, which is the design of the school and its challenges. This is just an aerial shot from Google that kind of shows you the odd configuration and how it is embedded into the Willow's community. A school of this size would usually have about ten acres, you'd want it to have good access from roadways, but this is the land we have, and these are the givens that we have to work with. The next slide kind of goes a little, it's a little more detailed, it's a shot that shows our boundary. Our boundary is the light area, and you can see this odd configured property that has access from Elliott, and this is Oak Court, and this is Falk Drive. And when we looked at it, you know, like all our other schools, we asked our architect and we challenged him, what can we do, you know? Let's not, you know, kind of see what has been done, but is there something different can we do? Can we do like Hillview where we put the building and the field and come up with a better layout? Can we do something like Oak Knoll, and so on and so forth? And what we realized is that with such a small space, and with requirements that we want to build a school that maximizes field space and playground space, because that's an important component both for our school and our community, we realized that building the school on any other location would be a poor utilization of this small land. If the building were to be on this location in our new entrance from Falk, we'd have to now build a new type of drop-off pickup loop on this side, and what would happen is this piece of property would not be available to the school like the rest of it is, it kind of would be outside of it and would have to be used as a parking lot. And in addition, this area here, there's a lot of trees that's currently used by preschool, and the odd configuration is more suitable for a building to fit in there like a puzzle, and leaving this as the largest area for the field and the playground here. And so, we went through iterations and we worked with our architect to kind of flush some of those ideas out. And so, the design, we actually, the, once we decided that the building should be on this side with its oddly configured, we then looked at two-story and single-story configurations. These two options being the single story, once we did that, the buildings would push and make the field and playground space smaller, and our objective was to provide the largest playground and hardcore space for, that's age-appropriate for students. And what you, what you see is a diamond here, which is a baseball diamond which currently exists and is heavily used by Little League, and also you see an age-appropriate AYSO field, I think it's about a U-10, which would be age-appropriate for that school as well. So, I kind of want to go into the, a little bit more detail into the building. I don't, at this point, I don't want to talk about the drop-off pickup, I want to concentrate on the building. As you can see, the playground is going to be about somewhere between sixty to seventy thousand square foot, which is comparable to Oak Knoll. It'll have a running track similar to Encinal and Oak Knoll, a playground, and a play apparatus. You know, we haven't, you know, these are just schematic designs at this point, and that, where that play apparatus is may change, and so on and so forth. This building, unlike any other school that we've built, is really truly a different design in that it kind of embraces that collaborative design that you see maybe in a lot of higher education or different areas, that it's an internal school, and every area of the school is about learning and education. It's not the traditional finger-wing campus that we see, but it's truly different in that it enhances collaboration and learning in every location. I kind of like delve a little deeper into the design. So, this is the first story of the building, is one entry access to control security. Enter there, administration would be to the left and would control access to the school. Once you're in, this is all indoor space, and that indoor space, this area is kind of a louder area, gathering areas adjacent to the multipurpose stage, music, restrooms, very similar to Oak Knoll and Encinal School. And then, these would open up to the playground, so this could also be used as an indoor eating area during inclement weather. But then, this area over here is all about learning, common spaces to allow pull-out and collaboration between classrooms and such. And then, we paired classrooms in threes and twos specifically to allow more collaboration to occur even between classrooms, and to allow for multi-age type of teaching where, you know, first, second, and third can be together, and, or third, fourth, and fifth, and I know they use those kind of concepts at Oak Knoll. The library, it will flow into this common area, and so we know libraries are changing in how they're used. There'll be resource rooms and support facilities in the administration area. And then, there'll be this structure kind of in the center, which is like risers where kids can read books, and also stairs that can go up. The second story is very similar, in that again, it'll have spaces for collaboration and pull-out so that teachers can work with students, or parents can come and volunteer and work with them. There'll be a science and art classroom also up there. And then, a little three-dimensionals of the classrooms, again, we mentioned that these classrooms are going to allow for the ability to open up, to allow for more collaborative space between classrooms, but then to close down and be quiet to allow for traditional learning as well, making sure they're technologically outfitted with flat screens and sliding marker boards, and just, you know, having that ability to do different things. Some different views of the classroom from the outside, trying to not make it so monolithic, but to give it a little bit of an entry way, and kind of the glass is there so that people can see learnings going on inside and also outside. This is a kind of cut-through through the building, so you get a sense of it's a very open, airy place. I don't know if you've been to Menlo School, you'll see some of that in their new creative arts building, but it's the same kind of concept with lots of light and coming in, and this is the, looking from the library is kind of a couple of resource rooms, and that's the staircase going up, and this is the cut from the gathering area. And this was the riser we were talking about, they'll allow for, you know, kids to go and read books, you can pull out a class and talk to them, it's just kind of, just creating various areas and spaces where learning can occur in. Maurice, did you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to say a few things about school design and the reason for the architecture, and punctuate some of the points that Ahmad made. You know, when you look at schools fifty years ago, in the 1950s, when this school was originally built, and its current places, and the schools that are fanned out like fingers, it was all about the individual traditional classroom approach, and it was very isolative. It was also a completely different era in terms of teaching and learning, because technology is such a game-changer in terms of not having the teacher in the front lecturing straight rows, and it's disruptive in the sense of the teacher being a curator and facilitating learning much more than traditional pedagogy. So, the form and the function are inextricably intertwined with teaching and learning. You saw in the 1970s, the other extreme. Schools were built completely open space, and one large school, for example, I used to be the high school principal of Northgate, and they originally built that 1974, and it housed fifteen hundred to two thousand students in one giant room. Well, that didn't work either in terms of it being too open. So, that balance of making space where students can work quietly, and they can work individually, and also having space where they can spontaneously collaborate and leverage the access tools of the Internet to poll and push content is the reflection of this design. So, it's about teaching and learning in a balance of traditional classrooms that, within the walls of those classrooms, you can make space that's conducive to learning, and spontaneous space where students can connect content and create content collaboratively, and just like the most innovative and creative organization that depends so much on the synergy of learning how to work together. So, I wanted to just give that, accentuate that teaching and learning perspective.
Right, thanks. So, next, you know, we do want to talk about, obviously, the most challenging part that we're working on right now, which is the school access. It's challenging because of the way it's embedded in the community, and we're really looking at it from various perspectives, but these are the items which our school board will look at the options, and the options I'm going to present to you are the same ones I presented to the Board back on January 7th. And since then, we've received a lot of comments from the community. We've also been working with our architect, our architect had actually a meeting with DSA to review codes and other issues, and so he had an ability to really sit down and talk to them about it. And so, we are refining our designs, and we will bring updated designs for school board consideration. And the lenses by which they'll be evaluated, first and foremost, is student safety. And we'll look at the drop-off pickup design features of safety and efficiency, and we have regulations by CDE and DSA that we'll have to abide by. We also have challenging parking considerations. You know, last week, we were at a meeting, a town hall meeting with the city and the town and the police chiefs, and parking was a major issue at our current site. So, we understand that, and we're trying to make sure that we balance our parking needs and can park our staff and have space for visitors, both regular and special events. And currently, that school can, a bus cannot access that school. It was built in a different era, and it may have been built for different purposes when Ravenswood was the, you know, the caretakers of that property. So, we have to design an access for buses. We have regular buses that run to our schools through the Tinsley Program. The school district has limited busing that it provides currently to Encinal and Laurel, and we have field trips that we have that occur, you know, as you're all aware of, you know, we go to San Francisco, or we go to, you know, ship trip, or whatever, and those regular occurrences that we have for field trips. And we have to, obviously, we want, we're trying to design something that encourages walking and biking, but we have to make sure that it is safe for automobiles and that interaction to that school is inherently safe. We cannot design something that requires and relies on people management. It has to be designed inherently safe. And currently, Geis has to have people out there putting up cones and taking cones down and doing a lot of different things to just make it work in the mornings and make it work in the afternoons, and it's a challenge. And we also have to look at our local street impacts, and we have, you know, existing landscaping, and so it's a balance. We have to look at all of these various issues and try to figure out what the best solution will be. And so, with that said, I'm just going to run through what I've presented to the Board and what you may have already seen. Again, this is not the latest and greatest, that we will show back, we'll show for our Board meeting on the 11th. This was our original, one of our original schemes, and what we tried to do with this was to create an internal loop that separated parking from the drop-off pickup loop. And by doing that, you know, there's a certain amount of parking we were able to get out of it, and in terms of the bus, it would have to come from Oak, because the loop didn't allow for the turn radius that we needed for our larger buses. So, in this one, if you're coming to park, you come from Elliott, you come in here, you can park it, this would probably be a visitor, but there's also additional parking here. If you're coming to drop off your child, you'd go into the loop, and then there would be drop-off pickup, and then you would leave. In this one, the buses would come through here, there'd be a vehicle barrier that would just allow buses or authorized vehicles to come through. Now, and emergency vehicles as well. This option, one of this, this scheme would allow an option under which Oak could be opened, and cars could come from Oak and Elliott. And if the school board desires, that is an option we can still look at, and that option would require further traffic states than what we have done. And Chip can go into that a little further as well. You know, they all have a certain parking that they reach, they all have a certain queuing, and there's, so there's fine tuning that needs to be done. You know, if we put down on this schematic right now thirty-nine, when we go to design development, that may be thirty-eight, thirty-seven, maybe forty-two. This is at a high-level schematic level that we're working on right now. The next option we worked on was to maximize parking, and so what we did is we got rid of the loop that was just separated the parking, and in order to drop off and pick up, you would go through the parking lot, and then you would drop off your student and leave from Elliott. This would allow for a larger parking lot, in addition, it would increase the queuing capacity of the drop-off pickup, and so that it would not have cars back up on Elliott. And I think on this one, you have a thirty-one cars that can queue, and you have about fifty-four parking spaces. In addition, we put some, there's some non-peak that could park along here during the non-peak, similar to like an Encinal School or Hillview. This one here would require buses to come from Oak and enter the drop-off pickup, they would enter, and we'd have a designated bus drop-off point. We are working and refining this as we're meeting with DSA, and we've gotten comments to try to see if there's improvements that can be made to this design. But this was, this is what we presented to the Board back on the 7th. In this option, if the Board wishes, we could look at also opening Oak so that cars can enter Oak and cars could enter Elliott and kind of disperse the traffic, or we could have some type of gate, not this one, but a type of gate which would be, you know, only allow buses or emergency vehicles in. At one of the community meetings, it was requested from staff to look at an option that would bring all traffic down Elliott, buses, automobiles, pedestrian that would bring all traffic down Elliott, buses, automobiles, pedestrians, bikes. Oak would still be open for bikes and pedestrians, but all vehicular traffic down Elliott. So, we devised another option that showed an internal loop, and that internal loop would allow the bus to do its turn, and we designed it for larger buses, for charter buses that we, on rare occasions, the PTO does elect to use charter buses for some of their trips, so we have that. It's not something that we do on a regular basis, but we got a design for the larger vehicles. And it has to have a safe place it could land so it's not, you know, out in the loop in there. And by doing this, the, there's less parking in this option, but the loop does allow all vehicular traffic to come from Elliott. It has a smaller parking lot, but there is additional parking that you can have on the, in that queue during non-peak times. The one thing is, we've gotten a lot of comments to look at variations of this loop that would try to save some of these trees that are of significance, and also to look at variations that could increase the capacity of parking on this variation. And we are looking at those, and, you know, we'll bring, we'll obviously, you know, bring that before the school board for consideration. And, but, again, we design it, we have to make these things inherently safe, and sometimes in some private parking areas, you see things crammed in ways that we may not go down. We're kind of following best practices in parking lot designs. We've, we're, you know, we have asked and looked at, you know, Menlo Park's parking lot design guidelines and so on and so forth, and there's also other things that we have to deal with, the DSA and CD regulations as well. So, that being said, the next step for us as the district is to define the project, and that definition is on the 11th. Well, they approve the schematic, and also they approve the design option on the drop-off/pickup. The district then moves into design development, foremost important for us is the building design because of our deadline to get those plans in. But it'll also allow us to complete our environmental review. There will be an initial study that will go out, and then based on what, if we, the district, through its consultants and through the work that it's done, sees any impact, it'll do either an EIR or a mitigated negative deck, and if it doesn't see impacts based on standards of care, then it will file what is called a negative declaration. Both the public and the local governing agencies, such as the city, the county, the state, Caltrans, all of those agencies will have opportunities to comment on it. The district then, you know, responds back to those comments, and then the school board approves that document and moves forward. The submittal for plan approval, we have the site and the building, those go through the state, and the arm of the state that approves that is the Division of State Architects. And then encroachment permits, any improvements to the encroachment and stormwater would come to the city. And that is exactly what we did at Oak Knoll, at Hillview, at Ensignel, and Laurel, and we worked well with both the town of Atherton and the city of Menlo Park. So, with that being said, I was going to turn it over to Chip, who's kind of going to, I guess, walk us through some of the city considerations.
Let's go ahead and take a brief five-minute, five-minute break. So, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. I just want to make a quick announcement for those watching on TV. We apologize for the telecast going out. We believe it's back on now, but at the same time, even though the cable, the telecast on the television broke, our streaming continued to work. So, if you're trying to watch at home and you get frustrated next time, if you go to the web and go to watch Menlo Park, City Council meetings live on the web, you will be able to stream it on your computer. So, for apology for the technical difficulties, and we're going to go ahead and proceed. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. I figured you didn't get enough PowerPoint, so I'll just keep going with that. So, I'll talk a little bit about the city side and how schools tend to be different than other developments that the city sees and where we may have less control over the process. So, from the environmental process, really, the school is the lead agency on this. So, the city doesn't create the environmental document or approve the environmental document. And so, it depends on what level of environmental review, as Ahmad indicated, they'll potentially be doing a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or a full EIR, and the city would essentially just be a commenter on that EIR. So, that would be our role through the EIR process or the environmental process. Where we do have a certain level, as far as collaboration and approval authority, is related to encroachment permits. So, as far as if there are access changes or the desire to build something within the public right-of-way, at that point, then the city does have to review that in the Public Works Department and then issue a determination, either approving the permit or denying the permit. Really, we really have kind of limited authority as far as, it's a ministerial action, and ultimately, it comes down to can they meet our standards for, let's say, a driveway, and is it safe as far as site distance and the ability for vehicles to see to get in and out? And if it meets that criteria, and it doesn't create any other impacts, such as drawing additional traffic that exceeds some of the thresholds within the city, then essentially, we would have to approve that permit. And so, that's really the process from the encroachment permit perspective that we would go down, and that's, that's where we have any approval authority. Ultimately, we have worked with the school district. We've worked together on several of the schools, including Oak Knoll and Hillview, and learned a lot through that process. And so, as this started, the school came to us and really wanted to collaborate early on through the process and helped to develop some of the traffic information early in the process, even though it's not really required until they go into the environmental process. They wanted to do that early. And so, this figure up here, as they did the traffic analysis, really shows that the top line is really the proposed school, so that's a public school. And these are using the Institute for Transportation Engineer Traffic and Trip Generation Rates. And so, you can see on the top is the proposed school, and on the bottom is the existing German-American school, which is a private school. And ultimately, as you look at this, the trips from where they are today are about cut in half as far as with the new proposed school because it does become a little bit more of a neighborhood school, and it has more of a draw from the neighborhood, which helps to reduce traffic versus a larger regional private school. This particular figure here is some of the level of service information. It's not meant to read every line, but really, what we have is we have a few areas as the distribution of traffic changes. Even though the traffic is less, we also wanted to look at how does the traffic, how do the traffic patterns change, and does that change anything? So, in this case, looking at various intersections, and we went a pretty good distance from the site, all the way out to Ravenswood and Middlefield and all the way out to that area, which is a pretty extensive area for the school. These areas did get slightly worse. They didn't breach any of our thresholds for having an impact, but they got a little bit, tiny bit worse. And in these cases, they got better because the traffic was changing from where the German-American school was going. So, it shows there are some differences up and down, but nothing really breaches any of the thresholds that the city would have for traffic impact analysis guidelines. And to more graphically depict this and to orient everybody, this is 101 here, and then Willow coming down here. The school is over in this area right here. So, there's some more localized impacts here, and some of the red arrows that are here because you're having more of a draw from those areas, but then you have the benefits of this corridor, and especially along the Ringwood corridor, as you're changing some of the boundaries of the school and where the traffic is coming from, you're getting those benefits and those potentially crosstown benefits throughout the city. When we get a little bit more specific, the location we've heard the most about is the Oak Court access. Currently, the school, as Ahmad indicated, had access from Elliott Drive. And so, Oak Court does have an access, but it's really more of an emergency access, gated access, as well as a pedestrian access that does exist, that you can see right here in this location. So, this was actually in 1985, there was a private cancer center that was there, and during that approval process, this particular access point was limited to only pedestrian access and emergency access. And so, that was back in 1985 is when that approval went through. So, this is the area that there might be the request for an encroachment permit to open up this area, and again, depending on what level of traffic they have there and how they construct the access point, it may be challenging from the staff perspective to actually limit the access there. Ultimately, that decision would be appealable to the city council, but it would be limited, and Bill can talk a little bit more about that as far as if you have any questions related to that appeal process. To talk about a few other issues, really, trying to enhance the walking and biking to the school, because that's going to be one big benefit to having this neighborhood school here. So, in the area, we don't have much in the way of bicycle facilities, there's a lot of local streets in the areas. They don't necessarily have bike lanes. We don't typically have bike lanes on local streets. There are gaps in the sidewalk network. The Willow's overall is one of our better neighborhoods for sidewalks, and except for in a few areas near the school where there aren't sidewalks, and there are some areas where we don't have ADA compliant access ramps at the corners. So, one of the things that staff has been working with the school district, as well as we've actually applied for a grant, to actually try to fill in some of these gaps. And especially on O'Connor and Manalto, there's some sidewalk gaps there coming toward the school, where we've applied to get some sidewalk funding through the Transportation Authority to help fill in those gaps, as well as to install some bike route signs and some shared lane markings in the area to improve the access. As we go into Elliott Drive, one of the things there is it gets a little bit crowded. It's a local street, and so when you have parking on both sides and you're trying to add pedestrians and bicycles and vehicles coming in there, it does get a little bit compressed in that area. And so, one of the things that we're looking at is potentially some parking modifications. We have some time to work through the process on that, but it's one of the things that we feel some modifications to the parking could provide some benefit and clear out some of those areas. And then, on Oak Court as well, we're looking at, depending on how the access point evolves through the process, we'll have to evaluate that particular area to ensure that it functions appropriately as well. One of the issues that we have on Oak Court, we had a similar issue on Oak Avenue when we were doing the Oak Knoll project, and we had an access point that was proposed by the school, and it was really intended to be for staff and faculty, but the challenge that we had and the concern is that parents might choose to drop off in that area and use that area. Through that process, it was a little bit easier because there wasn't a desire to have pedestrian access there, so we were able to work with the school district to essentially gate that area off for staff only. In this particular case on Oak Court, there is the desire, I think, from the neighborhood to have pedestrian and bike access from this area, but not necessarily vehicular access. And so, depending on how this evolves, we're going to have to work to try to resolve any issues of drop-off and pickup at that location or trying to minimize that as we go through the process. So, that will evolve as we learn more from the school district. And this just gives some examples of some of the shared lane markings and completed sidewalks. And with that, I'm open for any questions. Ahmad is here for any questions, and we also have Bill McClure. Thank you.
Anyone have any objection to me first going to public comment? No? Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comment cards before I start taking public Looks like we have one more. Looks like we have one more. I'm going to go ahead at this time. Now, I understand, I just want to tell everybody, I understand there are a number of people here tonight, and, you know, obviously, some of us have an opportunity to meet with some of you. We've heard from some of you via email. On contentious issues like this, I'm going to, there's going to be a saying I'm always going to express to the public before we start, and that's that, "To never underestimate the power of a sharp mind, a sincere heart, and a kind voice." So with that, the first person I'm going to go ahead and call up is Noel Burgart. And if I, Noel, I'm sorry, Noel Burgart. And Noel has six minutes. She has three minutes donated by David Jones.
My name is Noel Burgart. I live on Oak Court. And collectively, my husband and I have 30 years of public school teaching experience. Naturally, we care deeply about education, and my neighbors and I supported Measure W and recognize the need for the district to build a two-story structure. We understand that the school district is charged with providing a safe environment at the site. We appreciate, however, that as our elected city council representatives, you will look at the broader safety for all citizens, including safety for children on their way to school and users of neighboring streets, as well as all, as other community concerns. As you have heard tonight, the district is offering a site design that would route buses in from Oak Court, which was never designed to handle bus traffic. I was very surprised to hear tonight that the district may decide in the future to promote auto access, when it was my understanding from attending recent school board meetings that this was no longer being considered. In fact, the school board, our concerns about a slippery slope were not taken seriously. Since then, we learned that the district is expecting to include charter buses on Oak Court and is leaving the door open to auto traffic in the future. Oak Court is a narrow street with two blind curves. It has no sidewalks or lane dividers. The first time I visited Oak Court, I was struck by the serenity and country feel in the middle of town. Independently, my husband had the same impression, and we decided to buy our home nine years ago. People on Oak Court buy with the long view. The saying is that you leave Oak Court feet first. Oak Court is a unique street in that it is closed to through traffic, but is open to pedestrians and cyclists. It provides a throughway from woodland and Euclid to the heart of the Willows neighborhood with very little auto traffic. Because of this, the street is heavily used by vulnerable users. Kids of all ages heading to their schools, seniors walking with a caregiver, pet owners walking their dog, shoppers heading to and from Manalto corners, parents and grandparents strolling their babies. Though it is not officially designated as a safe route, the street is a safe way for kids to get to school. Oak Court currently represents a complete street. Oak Court's narrow and winding approach in the first eighth of a mile is too narrow to allow sidewalks, buses, and a bike lane. The two blind curves make sharing of the road by buses, pedestrians, and bikes very dangerous. Children riding to school, in particular, with their emerging bike handling and traffic navigation skills, would be particularly at risk. Keeping Oak Court free of bus traffic allows a safe route to the O'Connor site, as well as a safe route for students of other schools, Menlo Atherton High School, East Palo Alto Academy, and Hillview, to ride their bikes to school as they currently do on Oak Court. With neighborhood students attending the new school, there will be increased use of Oak Court by students. Near the school site itself, bus access via Oak Court would force pedestrians and cyclists heading to the O'Connor site to cross in front of the bus entrance. As automobile drivers navigate the two blind curves, we are often faced with the rising sun in the morning. This presents additional safety concerns of passing a bus at the same time. The Parking and Vehicle Access Schemes 1 and 2 from the school board would not only change the character of the street, it would change Oak Court from a safe throughway for pedestrians and cyclists into an unsafe route. Opening Oak Court up to buses violates the premise of California Complete Streets and the Sustainable Communities and Climate Protection Act. Many residents of Oak Court are here tonight because we care deeply about this. At this time, I'd like to ask my neighbors to stand. In closing, there has been a fence between Oak Court and the school site at 275 Elliott Drive for 30 years. As my neighbors will present tonight, the school site allows for a design that maintains and improves current access and transportation patterns while providing a safer solution for all community members. As city council members, we ask you to weigh all community needs under your charter. There is no compelling reason to grant egress from Oak Court. Please direct city staff to encourage the school district to develop a site plan that is safe for all users of Oak Court.
Thank you, Noel. Our next speaker this evening on this topic will be Bob Arabian, with, he has also three extra minutes donated from Richard Heinze.
I came to the process a little bit late through the school process. I voted for the bond measure, and I'm proud to have this school in my neighborhood. I think it's going to be wonderful for the whole community, including Oak Court. We fully support it. The striking thing in coming into this process, and I'm not, you know, a politician or involved in the political process on a regular basis, but as we came into this process, for us on Oak Court, the surprising thing was, as we attended the school board meetings, was the original plans put out by the school board, all of them included access through Oak Court. There was never any plan or consideration in the original iterations that preserved the status quo of access through Elliott, which has been the status quo for 30-plus years. So it was through, I believe, Oak Court's efforts and working with the district staff and the school board, that we were eventually able to get to a third scheme, which you saw in the earlier presentation, which is an Elliott scheme. That scheme is, if you look at it in a purely objective standpoint, you look at all the schemes across the four categories of parking, regulatory, safety, and convenience, as it's drawn, it's the inferior scheme of the three. We agree with that, and it does show that way. We on Oak Court worked with our own architect. We've retained an architect to take some of the designs that the school board has put out and try to improve upon them to see if it is feasible to bring all of the traffic through Elliott as it currently stands. What you see there is that the culmination of our work is Scheme Number Four, which actually is an overlay of school board Scheme Two. So, I'm sorry, Scheme Three. So it's a modification of Scheme Three. And we did a side-by-side comparison of the district staff's Scheme Two and our Scheme Four on purely objective measures, as it was, the school board has presented it to us, including the rules by the CDE and the state agencies. And I'm not going to go through all of these, but I've given you these that, to show that there is a viable way, there is a viable plan that doesn't include an encroachment permit, doesn't have to bring buses or cars through Oak Court, and does give you 50-plus parking spaces, which is above and beyond the number that is required, which is two and a quarter per classroom. That's the regulatory mandate. And is fully compliant with all of the regulatory laws, as we've researched them, and has been presented to us by the school board. And of all the schemes, it's actually the only one that is fully compliant. Scheme Two, in our opinion, fails some of the CDE's codes and would call for variance with that agency. So some of those points, just to point out a few of them, is the parking spots, we do hit the 50-plus. You do have short-term parking in Scheme Four in the drop-off lane, where you don't have it in Scheme Two. It's fully compliant, and you do not need a encroachment permit to do this plan. It preserves the status quo, fulfills all of the requirements, and is fully compliant. So we're encouraged that the board and the staff are considering this plan and are looking at modifications to the existing plans and are keeping the options open, because we do believe that this is a viable plan, and it's actually the superior plan based on all the alternatives presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arabian. Our next speaker is Todd Burhanna.
But I don't have any slides, so no more PowerPoint. All right. Thanks again for the opportunity to come before you folks tonight. The school district has presented three plans tonight for the O'Connor School parking lot and the associated traffic patterns. They fundamentally differ in whether or not Oak Court's role in the traffic pattern to the school will change from what it's been for the last 30 years. The district's original proposal involved sending every single car and bus down Oak Court, which is not a through street. And this unacceptable proposal immediately set the Oak Court neighbors into a defensive posture, and we began raising our concerns with both the city council and the school board and its related employees. You've seen me in here before for precisely that reason. The school district has since changed its preferred option to the one that brings only the buses down Oak Court. But as you've seen tonight, the residents of Oak Court have provided an architect-generated alternative proposal to the school district, which is the one Bob referred to as Option Four. So our conversations with the various board members, and we've reached out to several of you and the city council members as well, so our conversations have led to an understanding that the final design selected needs to satisfy criteria under the four main categories that Bob touched on: safety, regulatory, parking, and convenience. So the side-by-side analysis of the elements in each plan was submitted. We just went through that. And the school district and the city council now have a chance to see both of those. And it shows that Option Four really is equal to or superior to all the other choices that have been presented so far. It's superior to the district's current favorite option as well. So from conversations with the school district staff, this leaves only one other design objective that hasn't really been mentioned tonight, and was only mentioned in conversations with some of the Oak Court residents. It's something nebulous called fairness. And with all due respect, it's not within the school district's authority or its employees to sit in judgment of what is fair or what is not. It's not up to the district employees to try to pick winners and losers in what the district may incorrectly believe to be a zero-sum game. Instead, the district's role is to mitigate any traffic effects that result from the new school. The district's own data, which we went over again tonight as well, shows that there are no issues generated and that there is substantial improvement afforded to the residents on Elliott Drive where the school is actually located. We intend to continue to work with the school district board and with the staff in order to produce a school design that the whole community can embrace and that we will all be proud of when we make our annual Measure W payments. There will be a time, however, potentially, when we're unable to come to an agreement about the best option forward, and at that time, we may be back before you again to oppose permit requests. We recognize the council has stood with residents before in the face of more powerful interests, and hopefully, it won't come to that, but in the event that it does, we want you to be aware of the complete situation. So today, there exists a plan, Option Four, which is equal to or superior to the district's preferred option in key design elements: safety, regulatory, parking, convenience. The design doesn't leave it up to the school district for fairness. The option has the benefit of being data-driven, represents a win-win for the residents of all the streets surrounding the school site, and doesn't require city council or staff time to approve or to adjudicate in the future. We respectfully request the council make it known to the school district that you recommend that the district proceed with Option Four as the preferred configuration.
Thank you, Mr. Burhanna. Our next speaker this evening is going to be Chuck Bernstein, and Mr. Bernstein has nine minutes allotted. He has three minutes allotted from Mr. Kristin, and another three minutes allotted from Mr. Pedrero. And I apologize if I mispronounced those names. I did my best. Mr. Bernstein. I should say Director Bernstein of the Menlo Park Fire District.
Thank you. I just need to be clear that I'm speaking as a private citizen, a resident of Oak Court, and not in any official capacity, but thank you for the nice comment. And thank you for allowing me to speak here. I, my name is Chuck Bernstein. I live at 444 Oak Court. I have lived in the Willows for over 45 years, and I have lived on Oak Court since 1975. Question arises, why are we here tonight? We are taking your time, and I frankly feel badly about it. I'm starting to appreciate what happens in long meetings. I know you've been here for almost three hours now, and you have more, you haven't even begun the normal agenda. And yet, you're being dragged into this, and it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have happened. This should have been resolved long ago. Even tonight, frankly, I was disappointed by the district's presentation. It seemed like we had made some progress over the last several months, and suddenly, we're back talking about making a through street between Elliott and Oak Court, which was never on the table. It's not a legal street. I don't even know why we're talking about that. Things have changed dramatically in the last number of years. There used to be an entrance onto 101 off O'Connor, which changed traffic patterns. There was no reason for any cut-through. Now that's all changed with the building of University Circle. And the traffic patterns are just entirely different than they used to be. And if we open up a route between Willow and University, we are going to be creating a nightmare for the Willows. And yet, the school district has brought that up tonight. You've seen the number of Oak Court residents. A lot of people say, "Oh, Oak Court, they're such whiny babies," and so forth. The fact is, we love our street. We purchased our homes there for good reasons, and we care about those homes, and that's why we're here tonight. Oak Court is a country lane. It's a cul-de-sac. There's no through traffic. It's a narrow street. Right in front of my house, it's 20 feet wide. There are no sidewalks. There are blind curves. There are low-hanging trees. It's not a ritzy area, but we paid a premium to live there, about $187 a square foot, a 28% premium to live on a cul-de-sac. I live in the original farmhouse that was built there, built in 1911. It was the farmhouse for a chicken ranch, built by a Russian emigre. In the 1920s, it became a utopian community called the Charles Weeks Poultry Colony. San Franciscans would come down on the train to tend chickens. Social experiment was considered good for the soul. Because of its agricultural roots, we have our own water company, the O'Connor Water Company, right there on the street, and that serves our entire neighborhood. Just beyond the water company, the street dead-ends in a barrier, and then Oak Court continues on to the, a market, a local market there, but it's a private street, and there's no through traffic on the street. It was subdivided in the 1930s by a fellow named Bill Lowell, who came to visit me and gave me actually the original blueprints, they're actually blue, for the whole development. In the 1950s, I believe, Elliott Drive, Buyer's Drive, and Falk Court were developed. As part of that development agreement, they built a As part of that development agreement, they built a school there. And the three roads that they had to build were built to modern standards. They're wide. They have curbs, and they have sidewalks. They were built to provide safe access to the school. So why are we here? We're here to protect our street, the charm, grace, and safety of the street we have. But why are we really here? The quick answer is that we don't know. We suspect the district staff is watching your reactions right now. We think that if you're open to their plan, they'll just proceed and roll over the community. If you show any hesitation, they'll do what they said they were going to do at one of the meetings, which is, they don't want to delay this project, they're just going to quickly change the plan and move forward. So you're being watched tonight. I want to be clear, though, that we're not here because we're against the school or the school district. I was one of those people that helped move the Willows from the Ravenswood School District to the Menlo Park School District. I was the governor's appointee to the Special Education Commission for seven years. We reported to the school board. I met with school board members to get that to occur. I'm a supporter of the school system, and I'm a professional educator myself. Our neighbors supported the bond measure. But the most important thing here is that this school is going to two stories. That's going to be an intrusion on the neighborhood. There's no question about it. It's a visual intrusion. My house backs up to the school property. So do many of my neighbors' properties on Oak Court. Not Elliott, not Buyer's, but our street backs up to that. And yet, we're not complaining about going to two stories. We're not here to ask the buildings be moved. We actually agree with 95% of what was presented. We only are in disagreement with the use of Oak Court for either vehicular or bus traffic. So why are we here tonight? It's just not clear. There are alternatives. We said there are better alternatives. Are there even other ones that we haven't shown? It's possible to, for example, to use the emergency vehicle access behind the school for bus traffic. That loop that's shown made it sound like, oh, we couldn't bring a bus around that loop right at the front of the school? The fact is, we need emergency vehicle access for fire engines. Their turning radius is larger than school buses. If a fire engine can turn around there in the front, and they'll need to, or if they can go around the back, so could a school bus. In fact, there's really no documented or demonstrated need whatsoever for access from Oak Court. Some people have talked about fairness, that we should bear part of the burden. We are bearing part of the burden. All of us are going to have a two-story school in our backyard, and yet, we're not complaining about that. We're willing to accept that. We want to support the legitimate needs of this school, but bringing traffic down Oak Court is not a legitimate need. And it's a little bit disingenuous, I think, of the school district to talk about the improvement of traffic. It's true, there's only half as much traffic, but there could be even less. If this school were truly a K-5 school, we could split the traffic. Right now, people are going to have to travel all across those boundaries to come to that school. It doesn't have to be that way. If somebody has two students, they're going to have to go to both schools in the morning. It doesn't have to be that way. Something's happening, like our friend Bob Dylan said, something's happening here, but we don't know what it is. We've tried to work with the district. We feel like we've gotten stonewalled. Everything gets blamed on state law, the Department of Regulations, that, oh, you couldn't make the turning radius. That's not true, and we've proved it. I think you've seen some of the correspondence that's going on, where we've had to do the homework. We've had to hire traffic people to look into this stuff. So why are we here, then? It's not clear. But I'm asking you to require the school board and the staff to make a good-faith effort to avoid Oak Court traffic and to not consider the installation of any, the use of it without a demonstrable need for that. We'd like you to protect the charm and character of our street and to, if needed in the future, support the quality of life that we are able to enjoy now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Our next speaker this evening is Carrie Farrell.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. My name's Carrie. I live on Elliott Drive, and just wanted to say that my son goes to Ensignal, and we love it. We're so proud of the school and the district, and we're really happy to have another school from the district on our street. And I also want to recognize Mr. Shlakosami. I've been to a lot of his meetings, and he's done a lot of work, and I watched him try to make everybody really happy, and I think it's a really challenging thing to try to do. I just have two things I wanted to bring up. The first is that, you know, we pay taxes, Oak Court pays taxes, everybody pays taxes, and I think that all of the streets should be looked at in what is best for the school and the safety of the kids. And if you were to go to Ensignal at pickup time or Laurel at pickup time and see what the amount of cars are, and then go to the German-American school at pickup time and see all those cars, I think you would notice that you couldn't fit a bus in there if you wanted to. You couldn't fit, I've watched buses do three-point turnarounds. I don't think a fire truck could get down there. It's just, it's so, 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 so crowded that I just think that it's not physically possible for every single thing to go down one street. And if you go to those other schools and you see how people park and wait, you know, at the end of the school day, it's just... At Ensignal, the buses go to three different spots because there's no way that the buses could do what they needed to do and the cars could do what they needed to do. And, you know, Elliott has taken the brunt of the traffic for years, and that's fine, and we're going to anyway, but I just don't think that physically you can add a bus to that car situation and really make it work. The other point I wanted to make, which the gentleman before me made a little bit, is that the numbers about how many people will be walking or biking, that may not be 100% accurate because most families have multiple kids, and it is really not possible to get one kid to Laurel and one to O'Connor in, within like a five or 10-minute time limit, which is, usually they stagger the schools by a couple minutes, but you can't get one to one area and one to the next. So there probably will be a good amount of cars. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Our next speaker is Judith Jones.
My name's Judith Jones. I also live on Elliott Drive and wanted to start out by thanking the school district for all the public input meetings and presentations that they've shared as they've been developing this project. I think in our neighborhood, and our neighborhood includes Elliott Drive, Oak Court, and all the surrounding streets, we're all very happy that we're going to get a modern, vibrant public school to replace the funky little box buildings at the moment that we each stare at with a metal straggly fence at the end of our cul-de-sac. So it's going to be an improvement for everybody. As far as the traffic goes, there are just a couple of points that I want to make in strong support of option two or option one, and that I think the city will be involved in ultimately. I apologize that I didn't prepare my PowerPoint, but just around the corner from where you see that little Elliott Drive entryway in the school plans, there is a blind corner. That's really dangerous for potentially bikes, walkers, and all the bus and car traffic. So as we look at things, I think it's important that we look at the configuration of the full streets, not just the little entryway into the school campus. And the other point I wanted to make is that I think we're really talking about, on most days, a couple of peak times when things will be very different. The last time this site was a public school, as I understand it, there were two traffic entryways. With the private school there at the moment, which goes preschool through high school, the trips that are coming are coming spread fairly gently throughout the day. Yes, there are peak times. I can't get out of my driveway between 8:00 and 8:30, but the, lots of the traffic is spread at different times. In this situation, everything will be condensed in 20 to 30 minutes, and I think it's the safety of that time that I know the school district is working on and that everyone here is considering. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, as has been said, this is a school embedded in the neighborhood, and as such, one inadequate street cannot take all the bike, walk, bus, and car traffic. So we just all want to work together to make sure that things are safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker is Shu Rosenthal.
Good evening. Well, let's see, three minutes. If Oak Court is a narrow street, I don't know Elliott Drive will be. It's a narrower street? And also, since I live on Elliott Drive, my in-law, when they come from out of town, they go to Oak Court to stretch their arms and legs because it's really roomy there. And since Mr. Bernstein, I don't want to make a war out of it, but, you know, I'm one of your friends.
Wait, 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 no.
Okay.
We are not addressing other speakers. Address the council.
Okay, oh, okay. All right. Then I got some emails through my friend in Oak Court, and they told me, I mean, they showed me that it's all about property value, nothing about fairness of usability for school, the future of school. And so just, I just want to point out that. And as Judy said, my daughter went to German school when we used to live in the west side of Menlo Park. So I understand the traffic of the new school from coming from outside, and it's really, we don't have enough parking space there. And for the new public school, which would require a lot of volunteers, parent volunteers, and we would definitely need more parking space than scheme one and three, which only provides just barely enough for our staff and a little aides. So, and I have one minute. And on Elliott Drive, I cannot really imagine all the walkers and bikers along with the cars. I think it's really not safe, and if there's a safe, I just, I wanted to make sure the street is safe for everyone. I think I addressed everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Our next speaker is Brenda Canaan.
Hello. Thank you for seeing us and letting us talk to you guys. The very first meeting I went to, my gut reaction was I did not understand that if we were opening a local school, why were we, and the traffic was supposed to be less because there's local kids coming versus children coming from outside of our neighborhood, which is true for German-American school, why would we need to open a gate? And I still, today, don't quite understand that. And then I realized, of course, it was from the bus and the turnaround. So I'm glad to hear that we, there seems to be a solution in the scheme four. I hope that you guys, whoever is looking at those, will take it seriously because it actually doesn't really make sense to me why you would open the gate now after all these years and the traffic is higher with outside people. So I just wanted to state that. The second thing I wanted to say is I don't know how many of you guys have come to Oak Court to actually watch. You have good. Because there are so many. Those pictures, I don't know who took them, of the people walking, the dog walkers, the strollers, there are so many Willow Oaks children coming and going. So I would encourage anyone that's like, is that true? Come there. You will see tons and tons of Willow Oaks East Palo Alto children walking on our street. So the, one of the things that Oak Court can be to this school truly, as I would see it, I have a fifth grader at Ensignal, this is his second year there. He bikes from the very end of Oak Court all the way to Ensignal, and he loves it. So my thought is that a third, fourth, fifth grader is going to love to bike to school. That's part of what it means to be a kid going to school at that level. And so for us to encourage that as the city district and the school district is so wonderful for them to keep our street, which is already heavily traveled by pedestrians, bikers, and please again, come see it, come stay there, and leave that open for them. It will decrease traffic even more because the parents of a third, fourth, and fifth grader will say, "Great, honey, you're meeting Joe on such-and-such street," which is what my boy does, and he's on his way, and they love it. So Elliott shouldn't be taking those bikers. We take the bikers because they come straight down Oak Court. So I just, again, wanted to give you that picture. Please come see our street and picture it as a biking, walking, pedestrian street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Canaan. Could you have any other public comment cards? No. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and close public comment and open it up for questions from council. Councilmember Otaki.
Okay, so I have, first of all, thanks to everyone for attending and providing input and comments. I wanted to ask a couple of questions to both the school district and to Chip as well. First of all, there is this question about the configuration of the school as not K through five, but the tandem combination with Laurel, so that, so that O'Connor would be third to fifth grade and Laurel would be K to second. And I'm just trying to understand versus, versus each of them being K through five and therefore having a smaller footprint or, you know, closer neighborhood. What was the sort of decision-making that went on that?
There's, there were several reasons for that, and we had a long conversation in the school board and community regarding that. One of the main factors was that Laurel is designed as a small school, and it's a single-story, and the type of facilities there are geared towards a K-2, K-3 environment. The fields are smaller. It has no gym facility. So in order to create two K-5s that would be equitable to our other schools, we would have to perform significant improvements to Laurel School in addition to building a new school. So there was a cost factor there. In addition to that, running school, running small schools is inefficient. When you look, when you run a school that's medium to large, you take advantage of some of the efficiencies in terms of the class-size cohorts. We have a 1 to 20 ratio at K to three grades, kindergarten to third grade. And at fourth and fifth grade, we have a 1 to 24 ratio. And in a small school, that would require additional staffing because you start out at 1 to 20, and you may gain or lose some. And so in the fourth and fifth grade, you would have additional teachers at both sides adding to operational costs. So both in terms of a facility and in terms of a long-term management, that was not feasible for us. And there's advantages to larger cohorts in terms of the educational environment and other opportunities that students have in that larger cohort.
Okay. Second question I have is related to the sort of concerns expressed on the part of Oak Court residents about what they call the slippery, the potential slippery slope, that in some presentations, it was buses only, and then now there's some discussion about auto. Was, does that have to do with just more the timing of... Okay. Second question I have is related to the sort of concerns expressed on the part of Oak Court residents about what they call the slippery, the potential slippery slope. That in some presentations, it was buses only, and then now there's some discussion about auto. Does that have to do with just more the timing of your presentation, or is that, or is it that, that's a school board decision, or how, I'm trying to understand and make sure we're addressing some of those concerns regarding auto traffic?
I think there was a couple of things. I wanted to give the full array of options that is in front of our school board. At the last meeting, we did kind of, you know, narrow that down in terms of what we were looking at in staff. But the school board has those options, and they can direct staff to an option that would require further study on our part. But I think once a determination is made by a school on how that should be configured and designed, I don't see a slippery slope because when we submit the permit for improvement, that will go to city staff. City staff will look at it, and they, like similarly to Oak Knoll, may put conditions. And we abide by conditions that are put. And if, if ever anyone wants to open up the conditions, they have to go through the process, be there a barrier there, or not a barrier, a fence, or gate, or whatever that, whatever, however this finally resolves, those options are always available to a school board, but they still have to go through a process. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Just one other thing, there's another slippery slope that I've heard, and I think Chip could maybe chime in on this, is that we're not proposing sidewalks. There are many streets in Menlo Park that our school buses, Samtrans school buses, and other school buses travel, Oak Knoll in particular, and Hillview in particular, to have no sidewalks, and there's no plans for sidewalks. So, you know, our school buses, our drivers are governed by the highest, you know, requirements out there, and we don't go fast, or we know, we know how to travel in these streets that are local. So I think, I don't see that as a slippery slope either.
Okay, so then I wanted to ask the number of buses, and is there a cap that you see in terms of, or, you know, would the school district potentially agree to some cap on the number of buses per week or something like that, or per month, or some, some basis? Because as I understand it, so there's one Tinsley bus in the morning, one Tinsley bus in the afternoon, and then it's, and then it's field trip buses that I know for my kids at Oak Knoll, you know, they're maybe a couple a week or something like that. But it's not, it's not something that you see necessarily multiple times each day. Is there some average or some number that, that you're anticipating of school buses?
Correct. I think what you indicated, our current operations at other schools are that there is usually a Tinsley bus that drops students off in the morning and one that picks them up. And then we have the occasional field trips throughout the school year. You know, sometimes during outdoor ed, they're kind of concentrated in certain times, others it may be a trip to, you know, San Francisco or something like that. Those are, those are more on and off. But, you know, there may be a situation that we don't have a Tinsley bus going to that school, you know, that we draw locally from that area and that parents walk. But we have to provide it, we have to have that capability. And so what we see that is, is a bus entrance only, if that's the option the school board desires. And that it's a small school, it's never going to have a very large bus program because it doesn't make sense, and we cannot, we don't get any funding from the state, and operationally, bus programs are very expensive. So we're not into any expansion of that or anything like that. But this is the state of our current busing that we provide.
Okay. Another question I have, and this is actually for both of you. I know, for example, around Oak Knoll, again, there are many streets around Oak Knoll that don't have sidewalks. And there's, and the most recent plan has been to basically extend the no parking during drop-off periods in a way so that it makes it safer, so the streets right near the school are really dedicated only for pedestrian bike traffic, with the exception of one, you know, sort of drop-off route for cars in order to kind of keep the cars and pedestrians as separate as possible. So I recall, for example, on Oak, on Oak and near Oak Knoll, you know, it had been, you could park cars on the, on the side up till last year, and then this year, that has changed so that there's no parking. And that seems, at least from, from my standpoint, has made it safer for kids to go in and out and so from a safety standpoint. Now, the reason why I ask this is because both on Oak Court and on Elliott, you, you know, you don't have as many sidewalks, you don't, I mean, would, would we, I don't see anything in these plans that talk about like no parking zones so that it discourages the combination of cars, you know, dropping off or right outside of the school, and then that confusion between, between cars and pedestrians. Is that going to be contemplated? Is that, will that be part of a, of a plan that we would expect to see at some point in time here?
Yeah, I think those are some of the ongoing discussions. As we've talked to Ahmad in the school district, those issues have come up, similar things about should we, especially in Elliott as the main entrance, should we clear that out a little bit so that pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles can share that space a little bit better? Fortunately, in Elliott, we do have sidewalks in a lot of areas, so we're able to utilize that. On Oak Court, it's a little bit trickier because we just don't know. There aren't a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists that are going to that school now. And so as it changes to more of a local school, we'll have a better feeling of how many pedestrians and bicyclists will use it. And so sometimes you have to, we'll be thinking about it, but we also have to tweak these plans over time as well. Oak Knoll is a good example of where there was a safe routes to the school plan that was in place for several years there. And as we saw changes in the school district and the drop-off and the patterns, we had to go back in there and tweak that plan to make it work even better. So I think those will evolve. They're not necessarily directly a part of the school plan, but as that gets more solidified, we'll continue those discussions before the school opens and after it's open as well.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Carlton.
Before we go any further, I just want to make one clarification, just to know if we're having a polite conversation, if we actually have a seat at this table for the game. Bill, what is our, are there jurisdiction issues on us getting involved in school board decisions such as this? Are we really, is this going to come down to a curb cut that we actually have some say on, or, please clarify the jurisdiction issues on this?
Sure. The city of Menlo Park does have jurisdiction and control over curb cuts and encroachment permits. So it's really the inner relationship between where the school meets the public right-of-way. The city was very involved in Oak Avenue and the, you know, rear entrance, if you will, to Oak Knoll, in working with the school district to design what that was, how it would, how it would be utilized, restrictions on access, so it couldn't be used for drop-off and pickup, that it couldn't be used for other parking and on weekends and all those kinds of things because of concerns about safety.
So the city has jurisdiction to dictate use as well as curb cut?
So, well, again, the, whether a curb cut is granted or an encroachment permit and how that's intended to be used could impact traffic, impact safety, et cetera. If all of a sudden there are 200 cars a day using Oak Court that weren't using it, or if people could, could drive through Oak Court and Elliott and go through the neighborhood. I mean, it has the ability to look at those kinds of issues as part of that curb cut, encroachment permit process, and what the impacts would be of a proposed entrance, exit, driveway, and how it would be used.
So for example, just as an example, could we provide a curb cut for a bus and prevent access to autos? Or once that curb cut is made, it's out of our hands at that point?
So the example that I can give is Oak. So Oak has a requirement, part of, bless you, part of our, the encroachment permit curb cut for the Oak Knoll school on Oak Avenue was a, an automatic gate to the parking lot that was restricted to teacher, staff parking only, not for parents or visitors of the school. It's required to be closed, and it, and it opens when people go through it. And there was sufficient backup in order so that traffic wouldn't back up onto Oak Avenue. And then there were requirements to have automatic locking, pedestrian locking gates that would provide emergency fire access out of the buildings into that area to exit onto Oak. But you can't enter that area, so kids couldn't be dropped off. So the answer is, in a similar fashion, theoretically, there could be an automatic gate that would provide access for a bus, but that would close and could not be accessed or utilized by vehicles, by automobiles. So that could be a condition of the granting of a curb cut or encroachment permit.
So we could, I mean, is this, I'm not saying, I'm suggesting this, I'm just saying theoretically, just thinking of what our options are, if this ever does come before us, theoretically we could say there can be a curb cut if there's a gate, and the gate may only be used by a bus?
Yeah, I mean, it would have more detail than that because there would have to be some comfort level that there would be conditions that would be attached to that that would actually function that way. Or if that were not the case, then the, the project would have to be evaluated for what the traffic, what the vehicle impacts would be on Oak, if there could actually be vehicle access.
That would come back before the city to make that change.
Well, it would have to be part of the environmental review, traffic analysis that was done by the school district as part of their project. It depends on how they design their project. So, and then it would be evaluated by the city as part of its evaluation of the application for a curb cut and encroachment permit.
Sure. But once it's done, if they wanted to change it, could they make that decision unilaterally or would they have to come back to the city?
If it was a condition of our encroachment permit or curb cut, they would have to come back to the city, or they'd be in violation of the terms of that permit.
Okay. And I just want to clarify, seriously, how many buses are we talking about?
On, on a regular basis, our current busing program, if it was similar to our other schools, would be one in the morning, one in the afternoon.
So all this is about one bus in the morning and one bus in the evening? I just want to make sure that I understand that's correct.
That's correct, from our, from our point.
Okay. Now, I, I also, I thought I heard you say something, and I just want to make sure I heard that because so much gets said. Is it true that you, did I understand you to say that you might provide auto access in the future? That you're leaving that open as a possibility? If, if they were to put the opening there?
What I said is, the board, our school board, can define that project however they see fit. In, in that definition, is, if once they define that project, they want automobiles to come in, or they want buses, or they want only a loop, we will then evaluate that based on that. But once that determination is made, let's say they choose the option with buses, that becomes our project, we evaluate through the environmental, we then design it, and then we submit for the permit request. So if the permit request has conditions, as Bill McCullough indicated, we'd have to come back before the city to make any changes. So there is no intent here to put this and then come back later and do that. No, we're, you know, that's not the intent. I'm just kind of trying, was trying to say what is the options before the school board.
Okay. Because when I've spoken to the school board and I've spoken to the neighbors, everyone keeps talking about the slippery slope, and I just want to find out how slippery that slope is. Have you considered Scheme Four? I mean, I've seen the little overlays of what's required of turnarounds and all this, and I haven't had a copy of Scheme Four to, to go through it myself to have the experts check it. But have you, have you looked at it? Have you considered Scheme Four that, that was presented by the neighbors?
So Scheme Four was emailed to us, I think it was over the weekend, and everything that we get, you know, we share it, we share it with our designers. They, some of the residents on Oak Court have asked for various different things. We've shared it with our designers, we're evaluating it, and that one was also, will be evaluated. We may not come to the same conclusions as they do in certain matters, and we have our own reasoning behind it, but we will look at it, and as I indicated, we are looking at trying to develop a scheme that is, that the board can consider that is, utilizes Elliott and kind of tries to maximize parking, make sure it's safe, and so on and so forth. And we'll evaluate them all and, and provide a recommendation to the school board on what the district staff and superintendent believe is, is the best option for the school, student safety, and all of those considerations being the most important for us.
Sure. And I appreciate the need for parking. My son goes to Las Lamedas. When there are events, we hike. And so I do appreciate, you know, needing that, especially as, as public schools grow. But I'm also really, really concerned about the safety of, of students because I think that's kind of everyone's first and foremost above everything else is making sure that no one's harmed, you know, first do no harm, you know, that the kids can get to school safely. And I tend to agree that the walkers and the bikers on Elliott Court might not be safe with all the traffic and all that. So I went to a, kind of an expert on safe routes to schools. And we pulled it up on Zillow where you can look at the satellite map and looked at the possibilities. And this person felt that Oak Court would be an excellent, excellent, safe route to school because, and I haven't gone back down there to physically look at the barrier, I've seen it once, but I didn't take pictures, so I have to go back and look again. But there are a lot of feeder streets that come in this way on Oak Court and a lot of things that come this way on Oak Court. It seems to be a much more sane way of getting to school by pedestrians, by people walking to get from both ends rather than having to go down O'Connor and down this, this little wiggly street. Having access on this side seems better just in terms of, I say, traffic flow, of people flow, of people walking in on bicycles, and it seems that it placates less traffic, it placates the, the safety issues on that side. I didn't know if you had considered that, or really, I guess the question's to Chip, is safe routes to school really something more that the city worries about, or do we work with the schools in designating safe route to school? Because the, the person I spoke to, who tends to be very knowledgeable on these things, felt that, that Oak would make a very good potential, you know, potential, we haven't looked into it much further than looking at the map and seeing how it, it looks on that level, way to designate, you know, whether it be lines or sheroes or what have you, to get into the school.
Yeah, I mean, typically the city, we really, it's a partnership with the school district to do safe routes to school, and it really takes the neighborhood, the school district, and the city to work together to come up with those plans. The city typically takes the lead on the safe routes because there are roadways, and the improvements are on our roadways to get to the schools. In this case, it really depends on where you're coming from. I mean, ultimately, that's when we do a safe routes to school plan, we kind of look at where are people coming from and going to, and what routes make the most sense, and are there sidewalks in place and crosswalks and those sorts of things. And in the case of, on O'Connor, if we fill some gaps and we have sidewalks on Elliott, it may be one good route for people coming from a certain direction, and then Oak Court might be another good route for people coming from another direction. I think the one challenge that we have is the section of Oak Court from Menalto to the barrier is a private roadway. And so I've got to look back and see what sort of pedestrian access is allowed on that particular roadway because that creates a little bit of an issue. I think that there's-
Are you talking about the barrier on Oak Court?
The barrier in the- The barrier in the middle of Oak Court, that kind of broke Oak Court into two different cul-de-sacs, essentially. And so, the stretch that is from Woodland, the longer stretch that goes from Woodland to the barrier is Public Street. But the section from Menalto, that's a much shorter section, is actually a private street. And so, I think pedestrians have utilized that access back and forth, but I'm not sure that there's a formalized easement that's there. And so, that can create a little bit of issues there as well. So, we'll be looking at that, and that'll be an ongoing thing as we go through this process, and trying to make sure that we have good routes to the school. Fortunately, we do have, at least the main entrance has the sidewalks, and we'll try to fill the gaps there, so we'll at least have one good location. But this is another good spot as well, if we can make it work.
Yeah, and that's correct. I mean, we do look at those routes, and what we also look at is where the students live. And predominantly, this is very similar to Oak Knoll, in that it's in the corner of our district, so most of the student population is actually not along Woodland and Oak. It's more along Menalto and toward Laurel School. So it's coming more from that side of Willows. And so, that's one of the challenges. So if they were walking, they would want to utilize that private section of Oak in order to get to this school. And one of the things that we look at when we look at a safety issue, is that we do recognize Oak doesn't have sidewalks. And we did recognize, and we do recognize, that the population is coming not from the Woodland side. So to bring in traffic through Woodland to, into Oak for an entrance and an exit is somewhat counterintuitive, you know? So it's not an ideal path. But, having a bus in the morning and having a bus in the afternoon, which is only entering and exiting out of Elliott, we, you know, we kind of felt that that wasn't a large interaction with if there's walkers and bikers taking it. So it's that balance that we're trying to achieve in this, in this situation, in terms of clearing up some of that traffic that occurs on Elliott.
I'm not sure how you're determining where your students are coming from, because the school only goes to what grade?
It's a 3-5. We know exactly where our students are.
Okay, well, that's where they are now. In five years, they're going to be middle school, and other people are going to be having children, so...
If I, I don't know if I can go back to my slide. Can you go back to the slides, I can show some of the boundary.
Well, I guess that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, it has to do, it doesn't have to do with where the kids live today. It has to do with where the boundary is. No matter what, the kids are always going to be skewed towards that side of our, of the attendance boundary. There's not a lot of, you know, if you go that way, it's Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, and they're not our kids.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
Yeah.
Chip, don't we have a safe route to school going to Hillview that does not require sidewalks?
As far as, I mean, depends. I mean, safe routes-
Do we have safe routes to school all through Allied Arts, for example?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, safe routes is-
We don't have to have sidewalks to have a safe route to school.
Absolutely, no. I mean, a lot of our plans don't include that. I mean, you know, a lot of Menlo Park doesn't have sidewalk. It has the kind of parking strip or no sidewalk. And so, the Ensignal Safe Routes to School Plan didn't include sidewalk. Oak Knoll has a limited sidewalk, it's mostly parking strip in that area, that's why we did some of the no parking areas. So there's a lot of areas that we don't have sidewalk, and there's some sharing of the road, essentially.
So the whole sidewalk issue is kind of a red herring, really. Sorry, rhetorical question. Great. Well, I really want to thank you guys for coming down and presenting. And I hope that somehow this can get resolved so that it doesn't actually come before us. And we can say, oh, what a, you know, what a wonderful thing it is when people can work together with neighbors, and whether it's a developer or a school or what have you. And I really encourage you to look at the Scheme Four and seriously determine if it's something that'll work. And I know that there are a lot of laws, and good laws, for safety and turning radiuses and all this. But have a look at it. You know, consider it with the other things. And I want to thank all the people that come out, and the people that email us, and the people that make sure that we understand both sides of what's going on and all the different impacts that these things have. It's great to be able to have informational things like this, so that if it does come back to us, we have time to really understand and digest what's going on in the community.
So first off, I want to thank everybody for staying with us this long. If you guys want to have a lot of fun, you can join us again at our next City Council meeting, next Tuesday. It's always this much energy. But I want to, I want to go ahead, and I have some questions to ask for myself. Chip, I don't want to jump to conclusions on the sidewalks issue. I know it's important to the residents of Oak Court, the question of whether or not, if this were to happen, whether sidewalks would be imposed on them. I really would like to see the city look at transportation, actually look at that issue substantively, and give us a definitive answer if and when this comes back to us, whether or not that's a reality that we're looking at. I don't want to use some analogy comparing it to some other part of the city, or what may or may not happen. I want us to go there, look at the traffic, look at the roadway, figure out what we expect that, you know, what those buses are, and what that, what that interaction will be with the kids there, and tell us definitively whether or not that's a possibility, and if so, how much advantage would be taken away from them. Mr. Shlekoshami and Superintendent Geisels, you know, it's funny, in this whole process, I was, always struck me that I couldn't figure out why people were getting upset. And I, again, I know you guys have tried to act in good faith, you have. And I've talked to our school board members, I know they're acting in good faith. I've talked to our neighbors, both sides. Everybody has very strong opinions about where they are, except for, you know, I know our school board members are trying to figure it out. But everybody else, generally, when you have these issues, it affects you personally, you get involved, you try to attach the issue. And so, when I was looking through your presentation, I started to realize why, if I lived on Oak Court, I would be concerned. And I, when I spoke with the school board members today, I told them that I don't expect answers tonight to this question. What I would do is, I would provide you guys some input on what I would want to see as criteria, so that you could go ahead and provide those answers to the school board members, to aid them in the process. And I specifically want to turn your attention to page 12 of your handout, which looked at your proposed school access design options. It's page 12, and the title of the slide is Proposed School Access Design Options.
Is it a schematic?
No, it's not. It's the handout that we are giving, 12814.
Right after the risers.
Main stair and seat risers. Okay, now, when you look at that, you set forth all the criteria that you analyzed to come in with your design. And I understand that from the school board, from the city, schools, districts perspective, those would be the criteria you look at. From the city perspective, there's an additional criteria, and that I think you need to measure. And I don't know where it comes out in all of this, but that would be, what are the historical expectations of the neighboring property owners in relationship to the site use? And that wouldn't just be Oak Court, that would be Elliott, that would be the people on O'Connor. But basically, if I were on, I think I understand now what the concern is, because if I lived on Oak Court and I looked at these criteria, I would say, okay, which one applies to me? And I think it's a fair question. And I'm not saying that when you add that into the equation, that you may not reach the same result that you otherwise would have, but you at least have to ask the question. And the other question, the only, and the other comment I would make on this, on this criteria, is, I don't see how it's weighted. So if I were a person who is trying to look at this objectively, whether I was on O'Connor or Oak or Elliott, I would say, okay, you've listed all of these things, but how am I supposed to quantitatively understand how you reached your conclusions? And those are communication issues. Because I think if I lived on Oak Court, and I saw all of these criterias, and I saw the one that applied to me specifically, and I saw how you weighted it, I would start to understand what your logic was, that you considered how it affected me, and I might be able to better understand the argument. But right now, I think there's a communication issue in that respect, because I think although the process is going on here, because I hear it from the school board members, I hear that they're trying to take that into account, it's not in the presentation. Trust is about communication. Has to be real clear. You have to show people that you're taking into account how it affects them personally. So I really encourage you guys to include that in the presentation you give to your school board, because I think it's also going to help them as they quantify that, to talk to the public. And frankly, when it comes back to us, I'm going to want to understand that. Now, when we get back to our city attorney, and I want to get back to that issue, and I'm not trying to put you to your paces, Mr. Shlekoshami, I know you've worked really hard on this, I know it's hard to be in these, I've been in you, I've, we've been there with you in the, like, in these situations. It's really easy to be the guy who's, but, one of the great things is, you brought it here tonight for our input, from our outsider perspective, having gone through this, so I'm going to give it to you honestly. Mr. McClure, my understanding of this issue from the presentation is that there are specific criteria that need to be met legally. And that if they meet those criteria, they meet those criteria, and it goes to the City Council on Appeal, and we can try to determine whether or not the city actually made a factual, a correct factual determination, whether or not it met those criteria. Is that how this encroachment permit works?
By and large, yes. I mean, the one factor that's not specifically in our ordinance and criteria is, you know, kind of the non-design aspects, and that is the safety, traffic impacts, et cetera. And that was the basis for changes that were done at Oak Knoll School and Oak Avenue. I mean, they could design it to meet all of the technical requirements and specifications, but without incorporating design changes and controls as part of that project, it could have been a disaster on Oak. And so, but not from a design. So, we exercised discretion and control through the impacts that would result, and really weren't examined as part of their environmental study, because it really didn't look at what the impacts would be on traffic on Oak. So, in part, what they're doing right now is, they're looking at this upfront, and they're making sure that they're, they're deciding what ultimately the design is going to be, and then what is going to be studied as part of their environmental review process. So, it could be the environmental review process.
I think you're getting to where I was going, because what my question really is, the way I sort of understand it in layman's, just real simplistically, is if they meet the criteria, legally, we kind of are stuck, they get the encroachment permit. But my question, but then I think you've jumped ahead in the analysis, is because if they meet the criteria and then they get the encroachment permit based on the specified use, then the slippery slope argument comes in, where they say, well, what will be, how will the city council be able to stop them later, or what will hold them to just having the buses, if they meet the criteria again when they come back and ask for more? And so, if I were a person who lived on Oak Court, and I was thinking, well, how can I hold them to the buses if I can't, if I can't stop them from getting the buses in the first place? Is there somehow that when the city, if the city were to craft, through compromise, the encroachment permit and say, okay, fine, we're going to give you the encroachment permit, but we're going to take jurisdiction back and add criteria or add discretion, whether or not you will ever get anything more than the buses? So it's not just this, this criteria that's followed, that has to meet the IR, but there's some other extra level of discretion that the city gets, which would safeguard the people on Oak Court from having that concern, that this slippery slope argument, which I think is frankly, a big concern. It's, well, you know, if we can't stop them from getting the buses, how can we stop them from getting the cars later? And I think if there's extra steps, that the city gets guaranteed in that process, that somehow that could alleviate that concern. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, no, it, I follow you exactly. And it is, it is a gray area, because the school district has certain rights to develop their property. We do not have review and approval of the development they do on the site, and the design of what transpires on their site. What we do have, and as part of their environmental review, the project needs to evaluate what the impacts are of the project. And so, for example, if there has not been access to Oak Court for 30 years, there have been no vehicles, buses, cars, trips, et cetera. If you are making a change in a project, that it's a physical change in the environment that could cause a, you know, potential safety concern or traffic concern on the part of the city, that's when the city has the ability to potentially impose conditions on the granting of the curb cut or the encroachment permit, which could be, you know, automatic powered gate, buses only, or, you know, no access, or, you know, whatever the issue is. Now, the school district, hang on, the school district and their legal counsel may disagree with our ability to use our process to do that. And if they were unwilling to accept the conditions as part of that encroachment permit and curb cut, we could end up in litigation over that issue.
Okay. And so, I guess my request to Mr. Shlekoshami, Mr. Geisels, and to our city attorney, is that if this is coming back to us, I would really like you to investigate what heightened level of condition we can put on that encroachment permit, that it's not, well, if it's coming to us, there's an encroachment permit that presumably the city's issued, because it thinks it's met the criteria. If there's a heightened level of condition that the council could agree, that all parties will agree to, such that we don't end up in litigation sometimes, some point in the future, so that the school district can't come back to us at some point and say, well, now we're going to open it up for cars, and we meet the criteria, here they come. I want you just to investigate it, because that's something I'm going to want to look at when we get to that point. I think that's something that the, I think that frankly, that's a safeguard, that the folks who live on Oak Court would make them feel much more comfortable as we go through this process. I think that covers everything. I mean, the folks, my fellow counsel, my esteemed fellow counsel members indicated, they wanted you to look at, look at Design Option Four. And very frankly, knowing our school board members and their integrity level, I know they're going to want you to look at it, too. So I encourage you to please look at that, and I ask our staff to look at that, too, in conjunction with the school district, and provide your transportation engineering expertise, because if it comes back to us, Chip, we're going to want to know how viable it is. And I appreciate everybody's time being here, as late as you are. This is a collaborative effort. At the end of the day, we are getting a bright, shiny new school. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful school. I mean, it really is a beautiful school. The kids who go there are going to get the level of excellent education that we all get. But these types of details, and really, what I, that communication level, that trust right there on those other issues, I think are going to go a long way. I think that there are some areas that we could touch upon tonight, that I think will lead to hopefully some fruit here. Okay? And we're going to move on to our next subject. Oh, Mr. Geisels?
Yeah, I just wanted to again, thank the council members for having us present tonight. I appreciate the questions that you've raised and the information you provided from us, your interest. I also appreciate our neighbors on both Elliott and Oak Court, and thank you for passing Measure W. And, you know, ultimately, too, I really appreciate the criterion about school safety, student safety. I think that's very, very important. And then finally, I wanted to say, I appreciate the partnership and the ongoing collaboration with the city and the Menlo Park City School District. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to take a very short, five-minute break to allow Councilmember Keith to rejoin us and for us to regroup. to rejoin us, and for us to regroup. Okay, so we're going to go ahead now, and move on to Item B on our agenda, Commission Committee Vacancies, Appointments and Reports. Item B1 is Consider Applicants for Appointment to Fill Two Vacancies on the Parking Recreation Commission. There is no staff report for this item, and City Clerk Pam Aguilar will facilitate the selection. The floor will be open for council members, council members to nominate any of the applicants. A vote will be taken for each nominee, and each council member may vote two times only. So do we have any nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. Sebrian, who's currently on and would like to have reappointment.
I'll second Mr. Sebrian.
Any other nominations?
For, for the same, for a different seat or the same seat?
There are two seats available.
For the second, so you can do either.
Okay, and they're both for the same length of time?
That's correct, until April 2017.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Christopher Harris.
Okay, do we have any, do we have any other nominations or seconds?
Thomas Stanwood. And I really liked Lauren Roisman, too.
I know, they're all good.
Lauren was great. But I guess I can't, there are more than two people, can I?
Do we have, Councilmember Rotaki, do you have a second for either?
Let's see, well, certainly, my votes would be for James Sebrian, and also Christopher Harris.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, so we should go ahead and vote at this time, then, for first?
Yes, we'll, we can take a vote on the three nominees, and you can start with James Sebrian, show.
Actually, we don't have a second for Thomas Stanwood.
You don't need a second, you just, they just need to be nominated.
Okay, so first is James Sebrian?
By show.
Is it by hand? Yes, by show of hands.
By show of hands.
Okay, James Sebrian.
Okay.
Oh, oh, can, can you keep your hands raised if you want, James? Okay, that's more. Okay, next is Christopher Harris, show of hands. Okay, and, let's see. And we will just do the last vote for Thomas Stanwood.
Oh, we're done.
Done, yes. Okay, so James Sebrian and Christopher Harris are appointed to the two seats until April 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to all applicants.
Thank you to all the applicants, and we actually have, we have other openings right now, too, don't we?
Yes, there will be some terms expiring in April of this year, so there'll be another opportunity for these applicants who weren't selected tonight to be reconsidered.
I've actually spoken to, at least I've spoken to Lauren and Thomas, and advised them to keep their name in the hat.
Yeah, all of the applicants who are not selected, their applications will remain active for one year.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go ahead now and move on to Public Comment Number One. Under Public Comment Number One, the public may address the council on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the consent calendar. Each speaker may address the council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment, other than to provide general information. We have two public, we have two public comment cards this evening. The first is from Kim Rubin. Mr. Rubin.
Good evening. Kim Rubin. Where we left off two weeks ago, Mr. Taylor discussed the case, the ease with which Menlo Park can silence train horns. Mr. Taylor mentioned that previously Caltrain had asked for both overkill and indemnification. Caltrain's reluctance to exit the 19th century was a ballsy bluff. It has no legal basis, as we shall see in a moment. The city was, in a word, railroaded. Here is the law, Title 49 of the United States Code of Federal Regulations, Part 222, Use of Train Horns. Caltrain plays no role at this party. Section 222.37, we see that quiet zones are established by a public authority. That public authority is this council, as you see here, the entity in charge of traffic, not trains. There is no mention anywhere of railroads. This is your party, no reason to invite the noisy neighbors. Section 222.39 describes how to get a quiet zone. I quote, "A public authority may designate a quiet zone without the necessity of railroad administration, review, and approval. There is no requirement for approval, review, or even a scintilla of participation by a railroad." I printed out a copy of Part 222 for Mr. McClure. Why get free legal advice when you can pay for it? So you do have to notify the railroads, but you have to notify Caltrain, not ask them. So now that we have the guest list finalized, let's review how you get a quiet zone. You add secondary security measures, or SSMs, at key intersections until you reduce the computed risk index to a point where it is safer to be quiet, rather than to haunt constantly. Here are the rail crossings in Menlo Park. We add two Type 12 SSMs, one at Glenwood and Ravenswood crossings, and we are done. The risk index in the lower right of 63,000 is less than the 90,000 current risk index, so the quiet zone is approved without review of the FRA. The estimated cost is $26,000. This is what the Type 12 SSM looks like, installed on Glenwood and from the other direction. So let's start this no-train process over again, and this time, let's not get railroaded. The authorized entity to silence train horns is sitting on the dais now. So let's find a use for the current unused and useless property along the tracks, gain many millions of dollars in increased property values, and make Menlo Park a happier place. So I now expect a race by the four or five city council members, see who, which of you will be first to agendize this topic and get Menlo Park back on track.
Thank you.
Can I ask the city attorney a question?
Absolutely. Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Keith, I mean, Vice Mayor Carlton, sorry.
This might be for a bill, this might be for our chief of police. How many train accidents, does anyone know, have we had in Menlo Park, either with cars or people? I don't know, in the past five years, 10 years? I don't know, can I, I can't ask him a question, can I?
Oh, it's okay, go ahead.
Okay.
That information is readily available on the Federal Railroad Administration's website. You don't have to take my word for it. The answer is two in the last five years.
And those were pedestrians?
I don't have that detail. I believe, I believe they were automobiles.
Okay.
I remember there being some suicides, very, very sadly. Was there one suicide? Was that in Menlo Park, or was that?
Palalato.
Because obviously, the, the issue with, with, it was in Menlo Park?
Okay, I-
Because obviously, this is an issue of safety, that's why I just wanted to know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I encourage, for my fellow council members, we can speak with Mr. Rubin, also speak with staff members offline, and then if people have interest, we're happy to agendize the issue, discuss it further. We're going to go ahead now and bring up Omar Chatty. Good evening, Mr. Chatty. Thank you for your time, Mr. Rubin.
Hi, since I go and picket after, for awareness to bring BART down the peninsula after these fatalities, you've had at least two fatalities in the last year, and you've had that accident where you're being sued also, and there's a couple more, I do track them, but I don't have it with me. In most of the cities where Caltrain has killed somebody along the peninsula, 13 last year, except for San Jose, more people died with Caltrain than they did by guns, by illegal use of guns. Oh, thank goodness, East Palalato is not included. So as you know, the other day, another man was killed in Santa Clara this time, and I'm here because I know another person is likely to die in Menlo Park by Caltrain tracks, because they're outdated, not because Caltrain's a bad thing. And I'm asking you again, as I asked you before, and I apologize for being a little emotional last time, when the 16-year-old was killed, but this time, a good Samaritan tried to rescue a suicide person, and he got killed. Another high-tech worker got killed, just like the one that got killed, oh, that makes three, I think, that one from Palalato that came over here with bipolar. So I ask you, please, if this city council, I don't know if you're Democrats or Republicans, I understand the political issue, especially after hearing what happened with Christie, that Jerry Brown and the Democratic Party wants high-speed rail. Caltrain is and has been the placeholder for high-speed rail on the peninsula. I don't know about Southern California MetroLink. Jerry Brown announced that last year on Face the Nation with Bob Schiefer, when he said, and so did Rod Dearden in a separate on-air interview, "I've been working for 30 years to bring high-speed rail to California." 30 years ago, exactly, in 1982, is when California provided the seed money for Caltrain for the first three years. And I've joined, as I, as I showed you before, I was on the original group that pushed to bring Caltrain. So that's the political issue behind this, not Christie. Christie's getting nailed, but one day, Jerry Brown needs to get nailed, because people are dying. It's much more efficient when we bring BART down here. BART will work with this council in a trench, tunnel, or elevated guideway, whatever the city wants, and you can also have the bike path. And I can't go into all the details, so I don't have time. But I would ask somebody on this council to just have preliminary discussions with BART or the peninsula, other cities, and see what it would take to finish that last 21 miles. Because as you know, Santa Clara, San Jose VTA are moving and planning to bring it, based on Regional Measure Two and Measure A- based on Regional Measure 2 and Measure A in Santa Clara County, to Santa Clara. That leaves 21 miles to close the loop, to unite all the universities. Imagine the game at Stanford with Berkeley, they come from BART, they can't do it today. Imagine the shopping centers, the airports, all the major universities. You know, I mean, it's a no-brainer to bring BART down, and you don't have the horns anymore. And you don't have 100,000 cars a day being stopped by this Caltrain, polluting, causing gas. So I would urge you to please, please, open some discussions, and let's start talking about bringing BART. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chatty. All right, we're going to move on now to Item D, our consent calendar. Does any members of the council have anything they wish to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to public hearings, we have none. Moving on to regular business. Item F1 is a review, is to review and approve an agreement for emergency preparedness services between the City of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park Fire District. We have a staff presentation by Commander Dave Bertini. Good evening, Commander.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I'm going to make this fairly brief, since you have the staff report in front of you. On August 12, 2012, there was a study session that was held by the then-city council regarding the emergency preparedness here in Menlo Park. What that brought to light was that in fiscal year '06-'07, there were three commanders in the Police Department, and one commander was specifically tasked with emergency preparedness. That commander was eliminated, and one of the other two commanders were made the emergency services coordinator as kind of a ancillary duty. This led to some of the emergency preparedness things kind of falling through the cracks, although we did complete our emergency operations plans and had some activities. We wanted to come back with three options for the city council at the time. The three options at the time were to remain status quo, and that's to keep emergency preparedness within the Police Department, to contract and share resources with the Menlo Park Fire District, or to hire a full-time emergency services coordinator for the city of Menlo Park. At the time, the direction was given by the council at the 2013 goal-setting to create a scope of work and share services and create a contract with the Menlo Park Fire District. Attached to the staff report today was the contract agreement and scope of work that was created by the City Attorney's Office in conjunction with the Police Department. And this agreement, if approved, would commence on February 1, 2014. The agreement has gone in front of the Menlo Park Fire District Board as of January 21 of this year, without any changes, and was approved. The scope of work for this contract agreement is attached to the staff report. And I think it's really important to note that when we're talking about emergency preparedness, there are numerous regulations and statutes about the use of the Incident Command System, along with NIMS, which is the National Incident Management System, and SEMS, which is the Standardized Emergency Management System, that we must use during disasters, both natural and man-made. If these systems and plans are not in place, and they're not practiced, and they're not updated, this can interfere with state and federal reimbursements and cost recovery in the case of a disaster, either natural or man-made. And it could also negatively affect the city's response. So the cost of this agreement with the Fire District is $50,000, with an additional about $9,000 for additional services if needed, which are in that scope of work. The contract will be in effect for one year, at which time, the parties will be able to come back and evaluate the effectiveness of that contract and the agreement, and go forward if we deemed it appropriate.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from, I'm sorry, do we have any public comment on the issue? Okay, I'm closing public comment. Do we have any questions from council members? Okay, any comments from council members?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Otaki.
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that we have two board directors from the Fire District Board, the board president, Rick Sienson, and Director Chuck Bernstein in the audience, as well as Ryan Zolakoffer from the Fire District. Thank you for hanging in there this evening and joining us. So there are a couple of things. First is, I'll weave some questions into comments, but this has been actually a very, an effort that's actually gone on for a couple of years, because it was something that I remember when I was serving on the Fire District Board. One of the concerns that the Fire District had was that the individual cities, meaning Atherton, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto, had not updated their emergency operation plans in almost a decade. And I know at that time, the Fire District made the decision to hire in a full-time emergency planner, which is Ryan, to work with each of the cities and to help them update their emergency operation plans. And I know he worked very closely with our, with the, with the Police Department and Commander Bird at the time, to make sure that our emergency operation plan was updated and compliant with NIMS and SEMS. But the District has continued to also work with the city when it came to issues such as both training our staff to be able to work in the Emergency Operations Center, which is a joint center among the cities, as part of, on an annual basis, as part of the state's Golden Guardian exercise. And I certainly commend that ongoing work by both our city staff and the Fire District in collaboration. So then, it came to this, so I know that in our budget, if I recall correctly, in the approved budget, we have something like, I believe it's $250,000 set aside or budgeted historically for emergency preparedness. So as I understand that this, by, in effect, sharing services with the Fire District through this arrangement, in effect, we're saving a significant amount by doing that. The staff report notes that this would then allow us not to have to have a commander dedicated specifically for emergency preparedness. I assume that's a big, that would have been a big part of that budget, correct? This is, in other words, that this is saving net cost to the city by doing that.
That's correct. I mean, emergency preparedness is basically a full-time job. This does not mean that the Police Department will not continue to have it a great part. I mean, we still, there are a lot of different areas in the Police Department that still will touch emergency preparedness. And a lot of that, the budget that is in that section is for Officer Emergency Services and Hazmat, along with Blackboard Connect, which is what we pay out of that budget, along with all the training and the liaison we would have to do with the Fire Department. But it would save us not only time and resources, but I think it would allow this very important part of our public safety outlook to be done correctly.
Okay. And I also wanted to make sure that, from the city's perspective, you've evaluated the Fire District's response. Are you comfortable with the, either the time or dollar amounts that have been proposed by the Fire District, and feel that that does both satisfy the statement of work that we, you know, that we requested, and feel that it satisfies the needs that the city has?
Yes, we actually created the scope of work ourselves.
Okay. Great. So the final question I have has to do with the topic of community preparedness, because this was something that, while it was mentioned, this was something that, during that August 2012 study session, I think several council members at that time expressed interest in wanting to make sure that community preparedness was an aspect. I know that part of it is addressed, or one element is addressed, in the statement of work as part of, I believe it's in terms of education. But I also wanted to make sure that the Fire District will continue to be working with us. So I'm looking at Exhibit A. There's Item Number 14, Additional Duties. There is Item F, Enhance Public Outreach Efforts on Emergency Preparedness, Citizen Preparedness. I wanted to make sure that that is not going to be an additional cost to the city. I had some previous discussions with individual Fire District Board members last year, so it's not a, not a formal board, you know, it hasn't gone to the board, but it was my understanding that the Fire District looked at, at sort of the citizen outreach, the CERT program, the efforts that we're doing to try and increase community preparedness as part of their efforts, and wouldn't, and wouldn't charge us, or didn't see that being as an additional charge for us. And so I wanted to kind of make sure that that is, while it's not necessarily part of this agreement, I just wanted to make sure that there's an understanding on that, because I certainly want to make sure that one of the gaps that I see in our community is a greater need for disaster preparedness at the neighborhood level. So to the extent that we can continue to utilize the Fire District's involvement and subject matter expertise to help do that, I want to make sure that that, that's not going to be subject to this agreement, that that's something that there's an understanding with the District about that.
I think that this agreement is only going to enhance the public outreach for disaster preparedness, CERT teams, et cetera. And I think that's something that we envision to become even stronger with this agreement.
Okay. Mr. Otaki, if I might, Mr. Mayor? There is an additional charge, it's nominal, it's an $1,800 charge for that very specific service, the public education component. It's an add-on, it's a sort of a menu item that we can choose to acquire from the District if there's interest by the council to do so. It was listed in our scope of services originally, so it was listed here as an add-on, just to be clear. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Commander Bertini. I look at this, and it looks good. I had also liked that you're going to meet, you know, quarterly to revisit and evaluate, to make sure that everything is going well. And I think that's a great idea. And then I know the Fire District has Carol Parker on staff full-time, dealing with a lot of, well, she's the CERT coordinator, so I'm comfortable with that going forward. And I'm comfortable with the $50,830 amount for this year. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, I actually have a comment after Vice Mayor Carlton.
Just to clarify, we're contracting out services, not an individual. So we're not going to be renegotiating contracts, dealing with paying pensions, anything like that. That is all done with the fire, and we are just contracting out the services, just for clarification.
That's correct. We're just contracting an agreement for services, and that is it. Not for an actual FTE, or any kind of increase in our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I actually attended the Fire District Board meeting where this, where this contract was approved by the board. And the reason why I'm going to speak now is because I want to speak to a couple of the directors, staff who are in the audience tonight. At the board meeting, there was some discussion that evening in consideration given by the board of whether or not they were going to actually waive the fee for the city of Menlo Park. Ultimately, the decision, and I appreciate they had the discussion, ultimately, the decision was reached that this was actually quite a value, that the contract is being provided to us, that all staff members professionally, between the staff and the Fire District, had agreed, and that we were going to go forward with the, with the contract as put together. And I appreciate that, and that's wonderful, I thank you for it. I trust the professional advice of my staff, that this is a discount, and I greatly appreciate that. All that being said, there was also a discussion of what happens if East Palo Alto comes and asks for a fee waiver. I want to make it very clear from this, and I have no doubt, I suspect I speak for everyone on this issue, but I'll speak for myself. If they come and ask for a fee waiver because of their financial condition, you will hear no gripe from me if you grant it to them. Disasters know no borders, their financial condition is different than ours, and I actually encourage you, if they're having that difficulty, to go that route. Because if we have a disaster, there are all sorts of issues associated with that, and I want to make sure you guys understand, there's no gripe if you charge us and you decide ultimately to waive their fees. Anyone have any motions to make?
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve this contract as it is.
And I will second.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Can I just ask if the motion includes authorizing staff to expend the money for the additional services if they deem it appropriate? Because there was one comment about only being $50,800, but the additional services were like $8900 or something?
$8,901.
Right. So did the motion include authority to do the add-on services, including emergency preparedness?
It did not, that's why I specifically ask. And I spoke with a couple of Fire Board members also, and I'm aware of the conversation that took place about to not charge the city. So I'm comfortable with the $50,800. And a review, I anticipate a quarterly review will take place, and if there are issues that need to be addressed, I'm sure that you'll make us aware of those. Thank you.
That was your answer, Oswald? Okay. We're going to move on to our next subject. The next item on our agenda is Item F2, a request by Mayor Protem Carlton to consider approval of the logo update and development of graphic standards from the January 14, 2014 council meeting. No, we will not discuss the merits of this item. We're just discussing whether or not we will reconsider it at a future meeting. And at this time, Mayor Protem Carlton will go ahead and introduce the item.
I brought this back because new information had come to me, which I think is the definition of when we bring things back. And I did it very quickly, because I believe there is also a time limitation on this. And I did it because I was uncomfortable with the amount of money that this is costing. So I did some research, and I found two cities, and I haven't had permission to name them, so I'll say there are two cities in this area who have recently done a style guide logo like this. One of them, I believe, was $65,000, one of them was $56,000. And I have met with Charisse Brandell, who informed me that the amount is not only for the style guide, but is also, includes some consulting on the fact, as we discussed last time, that branding isn't just the stationery in the book and logo. The branding is a whole lot more involved than that, and they are actually consulting on that as well. So I pulled it because I was uncomfortable about a few things, and put it on so that it was there in case I came up with something that I was really uncomfortable with. I'm feeling more comfortable. Again, I wasn't, I wasn't around when this whole thing started, so I wanted some time to look into this. So I'm comfortable pulling this item now.
Okay.
If that's okay with all of you.
Well, I'm happy to pull the item. Anyone else to object to that?
Well, the question, when you mean pulling the item, you mean not-
Not having us vote on reconsideration.
Not having us vote on reconsideration.
I do have a question before this. So, and it's based upon something that I read. And it was a column that said that there is, that the statement of work, first of all, that the contract does allow it to be, the contract can be canceled. Secondly, that the statement of work did not include, like PowerPoint presentations or something like that, and, or style templates. So that makes me a little bit, you know, questioned about whether, just wanting to make sure we're getting value, you know, that I know we wanted on that. So, you know, I'm not quite, you know, once you've brought it up, there's a part of me that would like to see the statement of work, I guess, so.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Well, I, I brought it back up because I found out we could actually cancel the contract if we wanted to. And the, the research I did is, fine, if we decided we wanted to cancel the contract, could we do better?
Okay.
And so, so are you saying that you want to renegotiate the contract to include more?
Yeah, because it's so.
I don't understand the motion, I'm sorry.
We shouldn't be debating it right now, yeah, so, but I will say yes.
So, I have a technical issue, and when this first came up as a reconsideration motion, technically, the item that it came to us that evening was, as it was phrased to us, was to select a logo. We selected a logo. If we reconsider, reconsider selecting a logo, does that mean alternatively we select a different logo, not the one we picked? I need some guidance from our city attorney if we reconsider this and bring this back, that we can actually decide not to go forward and go through all of this.
So, the actual wording on the agenda item said, I think it was approval of a, I could probably even pull it up, but I think it was approval of a logo and authorization to proceed with the style guide, or, or something like that. It was more than just the approval of the logo.
Okay.
So, if you vote to reconsider, then the motion that was approved would be back before you. You could leave the, the approved logo alone and, and reconsider the style guide, or, or review the scope of work, or whatever you want to do, but the whole thing would come back to you to review the merits at that time. It was approve the logo, update and development of graphic standards, so you were approving the development of graphic standards, which was the style guide.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? Because I, Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. I think, you know, I appreciate the time that you spent researching, yeah, researching this issue, Catherine, and the information you found about the $65,000 from one city and $56,000 from another city, which is higher than what we've paid for basically the same thing, it sounds like, that's what your research showed. And I am comfortable with our decision and, and not reconsidering this at this time.
Peter has a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I was just going to say, for the, for the sake of being absolutely careful about what we say, it was not absolutely word to word the same, but it was close enough the same that I felt we weren't really going to, it wasn't going to be worth what we go through to save, we weren't going to save a lot of money, just to, just to clarify. And I also found out that since we voted to approve it, they've actually started working on it, and at this point, if we cancel, we would have to pay for what they've done so far, and it becomes a lot more messy, so, unless there's something terribly egregious, which is what I wanted to take the time to find out, and I haven't found. I did find out in the history of this, that it started off as a recreation project, and then evolved into this, but that's, that's a historical thing, so I'm, I'm comfortable that it's not egregious enough to bring it back at this point.
So, there's no second? I'm not offended.
No, I, no, you know what, as a courtesy, I'll second your motion, because I've been in that circumstance in this council, early on in my tenure, where no one seconded my reconsideration motion. So, I'll do it.
But I think we need three votes, so there would have to be.
Well, we'll, we'll do it real quick. So, we have a second, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion doesn't pass, and we'll go ahead and move on.
And would you mind just stating how the vote was, Ms. Agar?
The motion fails. Councilmembers Keith and Carlton dissent.
I'm curious why, is there a technical reason to state the vote, or?
Yeah, it should always be stated.
We can go ahead now and have our city managers report, which there is none, written communication none, informational items. There are no staff presentations this evening, staff will be available for questions. Do we have a, a report on this? Is information, do we have anyone giving us an informational report on this, or no? No staff presentation, staff will be able, does anyone have any questions about the 2013 commission attendance report?
I, I do.
Okay.
We passed that if, correct me if I'm wrong, that if someone didn't attend enough meetings, they would be removed from their seat. That's what we passed, is that not correct?
That's the stated policy.
Okay. We have a lot of people that are getting ready to get kicked off, commissions, for not showing up. I'm, I'm the first one to remove people that don't show up. I've been in a situation where I sat on a commission where we had one individual who I think turned up for four meetings all year, and we didn't have quorum, and it was frustrating when you hire babysitters, you turn other events that you could be attending down to, to attend a commission meeting, and you don't have quorum. So, I, I feel that people should make the effort to show up for the meeting, and when they apply to be on a commission, to really think about whether or not they're able to make those meetings. However, we just passed this, and I'm wondering, do we send out a warning to people saying, how, you know, by the way, if you miss one more meeting, you're off the commission? Is this going to be a shock to people to know that, you see where I'm going?
So traditionally, we've taken a softer edge on this rule. We don't warn people ahead of time, but we do try and follow up with them, and just with a gentle reminder that, you know, we deeply appreciate the time they commit to commissions, but we do need everyone that can attend the meetings, so we do have a quorum. I think we do run into problems from time to time because people are out of town on business, we do have a lot of out-of-town travelers, but those are people that are often very valuable to the commission as well.
And those are people who can maybe write in an explanation to why they're, they're not showing up, but they should still, I think, be, be warned when they're not attending, because even a really good volunteer isn't a volunteer if they're not there.
Well, and to that point.
And if they're hindering people's ability to vote on things because they don't have quorum.
To that point, we are working with the staff liaisons and formalizing the best practices for working with our commissions, and we'll make sure to include that.
Okay, because I think that, I, I would like to see every single one of these people receive a warning letter to take this more seriously, or, you know, provide a reason why they're, they're not able to, to make meetings.
We can send a communication.
To your question, I did speak with all of the liaisons that had the commissioners who fell within that 67% and below for attendance, and they did indicate that these commissioners did inform them in advance of the meeting that they would be absent, and as stated in the staff report, a lot of it is due to pre-planned travel or vacations. There was only one instance where a commission meeting was canceled for lack of quorum, that was with the library commission. In the other cases, there, there wasn't any issue with attaining a quorum, and I asked the liaisons if there was any impact on the deliberations or discussions of the agenda items due to the absences, and they said there was not, and otherwise, they were satisfied with the participation of those particular commissioners. But going forward, you know, I'm not sure how diligently it was followed up on in the past, but we do want to, going forward, we will be more diligent in following up with the absences, and sort of, you know, start with the staff liaison, speaking with them and giving them the warning, reminding them of the policy, and then myself, or if a council member, the council member liaison wants to intervene, you, per the policy, you have that discretion to do so.
Because I, year before last, three years ago, I think the Parks and Rec, we had to miss three meetings in a row, not because they weren't filled, but because people weren't showing up, and that's, that's just not okay. Because not only is it disrespectful to the people that do show up, it's disrespectful to, to the city, because in many times, these are important issues that need to be considered and passed and reviewed, and God forbid, we make things go slower in this town. You get my point?
Yes, absolutely.
Any more comments on item I1?
Yeah. I just wanted to comment on that as well, because I know it was about three years ago when we had some problems, and I, what ended up happening is, I think it was the mayor that ended up calling and talking to a few people, and, and, right, there was a resolution that occurred. So, in, in extreme cases, that is, you know, something that we ended up talking about and, and doing.
Yeah, because just, it, it's a permissive thing, the council can remove, it says that a, that a member commissioner may be removed, but it has to be done by the council.
Any other comments on item I1? Okay, we're going to, we'll go ahead and move on now to item I2, guidelines for use of traffic modeling software in transportation impact analysis, TIA's. Does anyone have any questions for staff on this issue?
Yes.
Councilmember Otaki.
So, I have, and Nicole, is that right? So, hi. I, I had gone to a, a regional meeting and, a couple years ago, and they said that VTA had this great traffic model. So, I noticed in the staff report, this traffic model is that same model that VTA uses, and someone from, actually, Caltrans, who told me that, and recommended that that was a, a highly regarded model. So, we have been using that same model, is that correct?
That, that's correct, but I just want to clarify one thing, VTA maintains two different model databases. One is for purposes of traffic operations, and that's what the staff report outlines tonight, that the traffics, traffic says in T-R-A-F-F-I-X, not traffic program. So, that's consistent, that, that's, VTA uses, that mandates its use in all cities in Santa Clara County, and Menlo Park uses as well. They also maintain a travel demand model that was recently extended to include San Mateo County, and that develops traffic projections out to 2040 or so.
Okay. And then I, I see that, so now you're recommending the successor platform, which is, which is Vistro, and I, I just wanted to, I guess I, I'm kind of fascinated about, what, what is the basis of this and, and of these models? And, you know, we make some pretty big decisions based on the traffic impact that comes out of these models. How do we, I mean, have there been testing or ways in which, you know, how do you know the reliability of the, the estimates? Have they gone back and looked at subsequent to decisions being made? How do they validate the, the accuracy of the models?
Good, that's a great question, and one that is a little bit wonky in, in description, but bear with me as we kind of walk through. So, the traffic system that we, we've currently used was originally developed in the early 2000s and was calibrated to field conditions at that time, so the city actually undertook a study to go out and measure saturation flow rates, the number of vehicles that can get through an intersection in an hour, and calibrated the models to those real-world conditions. The Vistro platform that we'd be switching to is based on, that's the same underlying calculation methodologies, and so those assumptions can be continued, or could potentially be reevaluated as traffic conditions change over time. So, the fundamental assumptions are, are still the same, the methodologies are the same, it's just a different input platform, and so we might see some small variations in the, the resulting outputs that, that come out, but we've had a consultant do some initial comparisons for other projects that they're working on in the city, and those differences that we've seen so far have been relatively minor. We're still working on them to continue to refine the model so that it does replicate world, real-world conditions for, for today, but those changes will continue to be made as we continue to build the model, and more projects come forward and, and use it.
And, and just final question, I know we're trying to make a decision, we have to make a decision a bit earlier than other cities, but do you anticipate other cities will also, either that they've been using the traffic's platform and, and are likely to, have you been hearing that, that they're likely to migrate to the new Vistro plat, platform?
Yes, I, I believe so. There, there are really only two options for successor programs that, that we could evaluate, and the Vistro platform is really the only one that provides the data management and kind of background piece that, that we need. The other option is called Syncro, and it's, it's more focused on analyzing signal operations and not as much on management of different scenarios and traffic volumes. So, within Vistro, you're actually able to, with a few clicks, change the year that you're analyzing, where in a Syncro model, you're not able to do that, and you have to build a whole separate file. And so, from that aspect alone, there'll be definite streamlining advantages that Vistro would provide that the other options don't.
Usability.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you. No more questions.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to councilmember reports, I'm sorry, did anyone else have any questions on that? We're going to move on to councilmember reports, clarification of the CCA assignment. After our last meeting, I spoke with councilmember Keith. Currently, we voted, and I'm assigned to this seat. Councilmember Keith has indicated that she would agree that this, should she be serving on city council next year, she's agreed to give up the CCA seats so that I can fill it next year. Does anyone have any disagreement with that? Because if everyone's okay with that, assuming we're all here next year, I'm fine giving up the seat with her, I just would like to have the opportunity to sit in that seat next year and have that experience. Are we all good with that? Yes?
We're good.
All right, so I'd like the minutes to reflect that we discussed that, and everybody was in agreement with that. You're in agreement with that too, I take it, councilmember Keith?
Yes, I mean, that's why I mentioned it to you after the meeting, and I believe it was just something that we didn't even have to have on the agenda, so, it's fine. Yeah, just to keep.
Well, they, well, actually, I thought I was told, in the, I thought I was told we had to vote on, and then I was told we had to just go ahead and do an informational item, but I wanted to make sure it was in the minutes, because if I'm striking a deal, it's in writing.
There you go.
All right. So, the next, so I'll go ahead and vacate that seat and be the alternate, and councilmember Keith can go ahead and be the selected delegate for CCA. Our next item is K, public comment number two.
If we're still on councilmember reports, I want to just report a couple things, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. On councilmember reports, on the San Francisco to Creek Joint Powers Authority, you've probably seen several emails coming in to CCN about the, the creek project. So, I just want to say a few things. First of all, there is a meeting tomorrow night, it's the San Francisco to Creek Joint Powers Authority, it's basically with the, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, and it's at 6:30 at the East Palo Alto Academy, at 475 Pope Street, at 6:30. And it's a great time to come out and provide public input, because that's exactly what we're seeking right now, is public input. And I think there's a lot of concern in the community about the way that the two alternatives have been, have been presented by the water district right now, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that there are not just two alternatives, and that there are more than two alternatives, and we have, we have to look at all those. And that's something that we'll be doing and talking about tomorrow night, and I've been responding to several of the emails about the creek, just so that people have a, a little bit more understanding. have a little bit more understanding about where we are in the process. The floodwalls is the big, you know, issue, I think. And right now, what the project is, it's, when we bring this back to council, which hasn't come to council for a while, the creek. And eventually, probably, hopefully, maybe next month or the following month, it will come to council, because we'll want to discuss many issues for this project. And so we'll have some more updates then, but I just wanted to make sure that people knew that there's this meeting tomorrow night and that nothing is, there's nothing set in stone. This is just the beginning of a public process to gather public input.
Yeah, and it's, just to clarify, it's replacement of the Pope Chaucer Bridge.
Correct. Yes, replacement of the Pope Chaucer Bridge. And it has other, you know, issues surrounding it, depending on the height of the bridge, but that is what we're talking about. And upstream detention of water and culverts is something else that we'll have a discussion about. So I wanted to let people know that. And then I also wanted to let you know, I went to the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency meeting on Thursday, January 16th, and there was, I just want to let people know that, about the mountain tunnel, which is part of the hetch hatchy infrastructure to provide water to all of us who receive hetch hatchy water. And there is apparently some serious problems with that that could result in, you know, catastrophic results is what we were told, for public safety and health. The lining of the tunnel seems to be failing. So right now, it looks like it could be a $518 million project for a nine mile bypass, and that's just something to stay tuned to. And I thought you would want to know that, because it's very important.
Do you know anything about, I was watching the news this evening before the State of the Union, before I came here, and I saw something about, there's been advisory now put out for San Mateo County, that they're asking everyone to reduce their usage by 10%?
Yes. In fact, in San Mateo and Santa Clara County, there's a voluntary reduction request for everybody to reduce by 10%. And then I know, we had our meeting on Thursday, January 16th, and then the following day, January 17th, in San Francisco, Governor Brown announced that there's a drought, and that we do need to have voluntary reductions.
So I know we can't direct, well, we've lost our public works director anyway, but it may be smart to try to do something to alert the public about the 10% in a more meaningful fashion. Anyway, any other public, any other council reports tonight? Okay, moving on to item number K, public comment number two. Under public comment number two, the public, if unable to address the council on non-agenda items during public comment number one, may do so at this time. Each person is limited to three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or jurisdiction in which you live. We have no public comments for public comment number two. We're closing public comment number two. I need a motion, don't I? No. Motion to close. We have a second.
Second.